Good morning. I'm calling to order the February 21st Board of Supervisors meeting 2017 at 9:01 a.m. We will begin with the flag salute led by Supervisor Wiegand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Wiegand. Well done. It's like you've done it before.
Once or twice.
Once or twice. Excellent. We are now going to move to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the County Executive Department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action and that item may be moved for discussion. Any board members wish to pull any item? Any member of the public here wish to pull any item?
I'm sorry, just I wanted to address for a second. I'm not sure if this is the right time to say that.
No, we will have public comment in just a moment. This is our consent agenda. Is there anyone in Tahoe who wanted to pull anything from the consent agenda? And for anyone who doesn't know, I'm looking at a live video of people in Tahoe. I'm not being crazy and talking to the podium.
Those are mutually exclusive.
They aren't mutually exclusive, that's true. And it was a long weekend. All right, I see no one in Tahoe, so this is a roll call.
Holmes.
Hi.
Duran.
Yes.
Wiegand.
Yes.
Euler.
Hi.
Montgomery.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Now is the time for public comment. Anyone may address the board on any item not on today's agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes since the time allocated for our public comment is 15 minutes. If it should extend beyond 15 minutes, we will take it up again at the end of our regular session. And please understand that the board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. But if anyone would like to make a public comment, please come forward to the podium, identify yourself, and let us know what your thoughts are.
Good morning. I am Angie Rowland from Keeping Lincoln Safe. And this is my grandson Bryant, who's joining me this morning. And very briefly, we wanted to come back before you again. We were at your last meeting a month ago regarding the offender trying to be placed in our neighborhood. Everyone fought so hard. I wanted to just come and say thank you. I know we always come with needs, and I don't know how often you hear "thank you." And Mr. Wiegand was absolutely wonderful, helping and working with us. I spoke with him many times. We just want to say thank you for keeping our neighborhood safe. Can you say thank you for keeping our neighborhood safe?
No. But we could tell he was thinking it really hard.
He was thinking it.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'll go ahead and go so that he doesn't disturb the rest of your meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment under public comment? Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Eric John Thompson. I reside and own 6600 Garden Bar Road, Lincoln, California. I'm here to inform you of a meeting being held tonight by our county's Environmental Coordination Services for a scoping meeting on the expansion of Hidden Falls Regional Park. As a landowner very near Hidden Falls and as an interested party, I resent the disinformation provided by the county on this project. I would not have even known anything about this project had it not been for Supervisor Holmes's newsletter. The publication of the notice of preparation was only in the Sacramento Bee. What is wrong with publishing in the local Placer County newspapers? Does the county want to limit the amount of information the public receives on this project? When my wife spoke to the public spokesperson on this project about the improper notification, my wife was assured that this was not to be the only meeting on this subject. In fact, she was told it wasn't a very important meeting at all. However, in the publication on the February 1st, under notice of publication, or notice of preparation, I'm sorry, it says, "In addition to the opportunity to submit written comments, one public scoping meeting will be held by the county." And this meeting will be held on Monday, February 21st of 2017. Monday was the 20th. Today is the 21st. I consider that improper notification. I'm worried about the powers granted to the planning department by my elected representatives. I'm afraid that I must agree with Frederick Hayek, who said in 1960, "Once wide coercive powers are given to the government agencies for particular purposes, such powers cannot be effectively controlled by democratic assemblies." We are part of this democratic assembly. I would like the Board of Supervisors to require the planning department to renotice the notice of preparation for Hidden Falls and also to require the planning department to henceforth publish in local papers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else under public comment?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Andy Fisher with your Placer County Parks Division. Excited this morning about the launch of our first ever countywide comprehensive park and trail master plan. I wanted to take a moment to give you a very brief update and also let the public know and you know about a new website that we are launching dedicated just to keeping people informed about this process. So we are just starting out. Since October, when your board approved a consultant services agreement, we have been busy. We have been setting up stakeholder forums with various agencies, groups, and individuals who have particular knowledge in various areas of parks and trails here at Placer County. We've been visiting all of the municipal advisory councils, and we've been taking inventories of our facilities as well as other agency facilities. So we're moving right ahead. We hope to find out what our constituents want of us in terms of recreation provision to update standards, to know where we stand in efficiency compared to other organizations around us, and to make seamless connectivity that we haven't had before with our trails and with service provision so that we can be confident over the next 10 years of where we're going with service provision for parks and trails in Placer County. Now, as part of that outreach, just launching today is a new website dedicated to that plan. You can get involved. It's Placerparksplan.com. One word, Placerparksplan.com. Anybody can go there. There's a sign up sheet there where they can get involved, stay involved, be involved in asking the questions, be involved in where we're at in the process, where the public opportunities are, be able to voice their ideas about parks and trails. And I just want to say in closing, we will also be back to your board at various points along the way, at check ins along this process over the next year. We want to make sure that we're asking the right questions as we go into online surveys in the next month or two. We want to hear what you're hearing from your constituents. We want to make sure that we're headed in the right direction so that this plan is a useful tool and not a dusty binder. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy. And Andy, I was going to suggest that you give your card to the gentleman who spoke before you, and you just did that. You read my mind. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Montgomery, members of the board. Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director. I'd just like to take a few moments this morning to update you on the evacuee shelter that we operated from February 12th to February 15th, about a week ago. Seems like a long time ago. We opened this shelter on Sunday evening, February 12th, with approximately 20 individuals. And that increased throughout the night to by the next morning, we had 80 individuals in attendance. The following day on Monday, February 13th, swelled to about 300 individuals. We had about 250 of those individuals spend the night. And then the following day on Tuesday, Valentine's Day, February 14th, it shrank to about 102. And that was in light of the lifting of the mandatory evacuation of the Oroville area. But that day was highlighted by a beautiful wedding that hopefully some of you have seen on social media and on some of the news channel outlets. Wednesday, February 15th, shelter was closed at midday. Those choosing not to return were actually given the option to go to other shelters closer to their homes. Our department actually took the lead in operating this shelter on Saturday night with, or Sunday night, with key support from your office, the sheriff, the PIO, OES, Human Resources, and many other departments. We had a number of key community partners that we could not have done this without, most notably the Salvation Army, who provided three meals a day to every person that was in attendance. We also had great support from the Placer County Law Enforcement Chaplaincy, City of Roseville, including both the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Fair Ground staff, the Roseville Seek Temple, Rockland Police Department volunteers, and a host of other community volunteers. Now typically, the Red Cross would actually operate a shelter like this, and our role is backup for the Red Cross, but they were so overwhelmed with demands further north that we actually, they were not able to provide assistance, and we actually ended up taking the lead for the county on this. So we jumped in, were able to identify volunteers, and coordinate resources to over 350 individuals over three and a half days. And I just have to say that the generosity of our community was overwhelming. If we needed anything, our PIO, all they had to do was tweet, and within an hour, we had three times what we asked for. And had a tremendous level of resources that Dr. Oldham's going to talk about. We also were able to shelter many animals at our new Animal Services Center. So we brought a huge number of animals from the evacuees forward. We also assisted Yuba County. They transferred about 50 animals to us to take during the crisis. So finally, I'd like to thank Supervisor Duran. He was actually on the site, helping us set up the shelter there every day, helping us do whatever was necessary to keep it functioning. We think it was a great training experience for us, but more than a training experience, we were actually able to meet the needs of our neighbors and really get them to a better place. And now I'd like to invite Dr. Oldham just to speak for a minute or two regarding more details.
Great, thanks Jeff. And actually, I don't have a lot more details to provide, but just wanted to reiterate Jeff's message that this was, you know, a new adventure in some ways for us. Typically, HHS works alongside American Red Cross with Red Cross in the lead, but in this case, we had, you know, one of the largest shelters in memory, but also with 65 hours of operation, one of the longest serving shelters. And so we have, you know, a long list of lessons learned, of things that we would like to improve the next time we do this, but I'm, you know, very proud of all of our staff, all of our volunteers, and really the whole community coming together to make this shelter work for the people that we were serving, particularly among our Health and Human Services staff. We had, at one point, nearly 300 guests there in the shelter, and also had a lot of people who just parked outside because they had animals or for other reasons weren't coming into the shelter. I would estimate that about a third of those people had chronic health conditions, including at least a dozen who had serious mental illnesses. And I thought our HHS staff, along with our volunteer organizations, faith-based community, really came together to support those individuals. A special shout out to a lot of our nurses, so some former Placer County Medical Clinic nurses who helped out, along with foster care nurses and communicable disease nurses kind of pitched in. So across the department came in to really support the medical needs of the people who were staying with in our shelter. But also, so we really tried, we had the goal of keeping our evacuees out of the emergency department as much as possible. As this board knows, our emergency departments are really at capacity right now, and both for the benefits of our guests in the shelter, we didn't want them to go have to sit in a busy emergency department for hours, but also for our real public health system and the emergency departments. We didn't want to contribute to the overcrowding. So we really came together to say, one, let's try to triage and take care of a lot of these medical needs within the shelter. But then we identified Sutter Urgent Care in Roseville as a resource. So they were, they just said, and Dr. Rob Bixler, thank you very much to Dr. Bixler for agreeing to kind of change the rules a little bit during this emergency situation. Typically, Sutter Medical Foundation requires that you be in primary care with Sutter, but in this case, they waived those rules and just that any of the evacuees come on over. And so I think that diverted a lot of people who otherwise might have had to go to the emergency department, didn't have to. And so we only ended up, I think, referring three or four shelter individuals with acute medical needs to the emergency department. So I thought that was a real success and wouldn't have happened without really collaboration across the medical system. And finally, we'd like to thank to RAI Dialysis and Lincoln. One of the issues that came up, we had a number of evacuees who needed dialysis, which can be a life or death issue if you don't get dialysis when you're overdue. And so all of Roseville was full, all the dialysis clinics were full, and they really stepped up and said, you know, and we had volunteers who were driving patients in need of dialysis to Lincoln. And so just really appreciate all those who really went above and beyond in this response. Jeff mentioned the thanks to lots of our organizations. Again, special thanks to Supervisor Duran, who was setting up cots at about 3:00 in the morning with us, and just really appreciated all the support provided by the community. Jeff mentioned the donations, so we actually were able to use a lot of them, and so a lot of our guests were, really needed those supplies. We do have an abundance still of donations and have been in contact with a number of community-based organizations. Actually, we've kept all of the cots and everything in place over the weekend, just in case, so in case we had another round of evacuations. So when it becomes clear that we're not going to have evacuations, we will start to break all that stuff down, including the donations, and we have community-based organizations who will take it all. So I feel very good about the fact that we were able to use, you know, the community came together and provided, like Jeff said, probably three or four times what we needed for our evacuees, but also we have some things that we can, that will stay here in the community. With that, I think we're, answer any questions. Would appreciate, again, the support.
Jack?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, you know, just kind of jump on what both Jeff and Rob were saying. It was pretty incredible. I mean, if you can imagine just for a second, being uprooted from your home at, you know, 10 o'clock at night, and then having to, you know, trying to get out, not knowing what the future holds for you, you know, with your kids and not knowing where you're going, to be able to go someplace where, you know, you're provided a cot, you're provided, you know, you're welcomed, you're provided medical care if you need it, because a lot of folks, you know, the last thing, you know, they forgot to take their medications, you know, Dr. Rob was writing prescriptions for diabetic and stuff, you know, whatever people needed. You know, despite how things were thrown together, it really worked. It really worked really well. There's a lot of things that we learned, that we can do better and be more efficient and effective. We now know that we've got a ton of resources out there, aside from the ones that we commonly know, use. So, you know, we're going to be updating those and following up and making sure that we know the people that are there. So if this happens again, we're ready for that. Finally, I just want to thank the community, you know, District 1, the surrounding areas, really stepped up. And if any of you have seen the pictures of the mini Walmart we've got down at the fairgrounds, there's a lot of things there that people, you know, needed, and they came through. And literally, it was like that. People would say we needed diapers, or, you know, I'd go on a bottle run for bottles or whatever. We needed pillows, whatever it was, you know, it went out on social media, and we had people lining up to bring those things and donate them to everybody. So I want to thank everybody for that. You know, it was, you know, it was an interesting time, and I think we've got a lot of things to learn about. And I want to thank HHS for what they did and how they operated. Very professional, so.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I always, also wanted to recognize the Placer County Sheriff's Department that sent buses, their bus up and their vans up to transport the inmates in some of the county jails up there, and I think they took some as far as Alameda County to house them. So they did a great job in providing safety for the inmates. And also the Sierra Sacramento Valley Emergency Medical Services Agency that sent the AMR, American Medical Response Ambulance up to transport the patients from the hospitals and the care facilities up there. So they did a great job, and it's great to see everybody working together to try to solve a major crisis. So thanks to them as well.
Thank you. We are still in public comment. Are there any members of the public here in Auburn who wish to make public comments? Anyone in Tahoe who wishes to make public comment on any item that is not on today's agenda? All right, seeing no one in Tahoe, we are going to move to board member reports. Any board member reports today? I think we just got one. Okay, no board member reports. We are then going to move to our first timed item. This is the Public Works and Facilities item, Pinion Creek 2 annexation.
Thank you again, Andy Fisher with the Placer County Parks Division. The multi-step action before you right now is to conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, tabulate ballots, and adopt a resolution annexing the Pinion Creek 2 subdivision into Zona Benefit 194, called the Martis Valley Recreation Zone within County Service Area Zone 28, and impose an annual assessment of $158.27 per parcel to take place to begin in fiscal year 1718 with a cost of living modification applied. This is for park maintenance, trail maintenance, administration, and park and trail development for all parcels that are or will be a part of the Pinion Creek 2 subdivision project, subject to the recordation of the final map for the Pinion Creek 2 subdivision. That final map is the subject of your next item before you. Briefly, Zone 194 was created in 2006. Its purpose is to pay for the development and maintenance of parks and trails in the Martis Valley area. Not all of it has been built yet, but according to the Martis Valley Community Plan, we envision a buildout of 10 miles of Class 1 paved bikeway called the Martis Valley Trail. There are six and a half miles of some of the most scenic natural surface multipurpose trails in Placer County in that area, and also a 50-acre parcel to be developed for park and trailhead purposes. The original subdivision in Zone 194 came in in 2006, was Martis Camp. Subsequently, the Schaefer's Mill subdivision has annexed in, as has Hopkins Ranch. Today, there are 1,165 parcels participating. And this action before you for Pinion Creek would add 38 additional parcels for a total of 1,203 parcels. Current payers in Zone 194 pay $164.98 in this fiscal year. As the action stated, the engineer's report for Pinion Creek calls for a budget of, an assessment of $158.27 plus prescribed cost of living increases to begin in 1718 fiscal year. So what that does mean is that existing payers will go down by $6.71 as more payers have come in. That distributed budget goes down a little bit. So as I turn back to the chair, just punctuate a couple of the actions to follow in this action. It is a public hearing. Waivers of notification requirements for this hearing have been signed by the property owner of record for Pinion Creek 2. Likewise, ballots approving or rejecting this new assessment for Pinion Creek 2 have been submitted and tabulated to the clerk of the board and can be read as part of this hearing. With that, I'll turn it back.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I'm opening the hearing. Are there any comments on this hearing? Anyone have any input on this? Anyone in Tahoe? This is your opportunity under the public hearing to make comments on this? All right, seeing none, closing the public hearing. We are being asked to consider all protests, tabulate ballots, and adopt a resolution. Let's start with tabulating ballots.
One ballot was received, and the vote was yes.
Excellent, so it sounds like it carried. All right, what is the pleasure of my board in adopting the resolution? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're also being asked to authorize the chair to sign the final map and subdivision improvement agreement. Andy, did you have anything additional for this item?
This item would go to our county surveyor, Leslie Ansberry.
Leslie.
Thank you. This is the final map for the Pinion Creek 2 subdivision. It's a 38-lot planned development. It's located on the northern boundary of Placer County, adjacent to the town of Truckee. The improvements within this subdivision consist of subdivision streets, storm drains, sewer, water, and other miscellaneous improvements. The streets within this subdivision are private, with the maintenance provided by the Homeowners Association. Security sufficient to cover the cost of the public improvements has been provided by the developer. With your approval of the annexation of the property into Zona Benefit 194, all of the conditions of approval have been met. Therefore, we request your approval of the subdivision, or the final map and the subdivision improvement agreement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from any member of the board? Any member of the public have any questions or comments on this? Any member of the public in Tahoe have any comments or questions on this agenda item? All right, what's the pleasure of the board? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Leslie? Thank you very much. Andy? Thank you very much. We're now going to move to our 9:15 timed item. This is a Community Development Resource Agency item. This is the North Star Mountain Master Plan. I believe Alan Bruch will be presenting this item today. Alan, welcome down from Tahoe.
Thank you. Okay, Alan Bruch, I'm with the Planning Services Division in Tahoe. Thank you for taking this particular item. There is a batting plan we're going to have for you today. I'm going to do the presentation on the staff behalf for the entitlements being asked. Then we're going to have our consultants, is going to discuss a little bit more in detail some of the comments we received. Patrick Angel from Ascent is right here. And then we'll have, the applicant has a PowerPoint also, and then Nadia Guerrero is going to present her team as they present the PowerPoint.
And Alan, just as a point of reference, we have about a dozen people in Tahoe who I believe are all here for this agenda item.
Thanks, I appreciate that. So hopefully they see the PowerPoint too, I hope.
Are you seeing the PowerPoint there in Tahoe? Someone shake your head yes or no?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Excellent, okay. Okay, so I'll get started here. This is the North Star Ski Area, so it is in Martis Valley. Access is off 267 at this location, and here's Highway 89. So the project size area, you know, is about 8,000 acres. The ski area is about 5,500 acres. So the project, what they want to do is provide a 20-year plan for their existing site that was established in the early 1970s. And they were going to extend their ski facilities, that being their ski runs, trails, provide some bridges, snowmaking, and provide a better use of the facility and some of those improvements. And that's what the applicant's going to discuss, why they're making these ski runs a little bit bigger and a little bit better, because technology's improved what people use on the ski areas. And so what North Star has done is they've adopted towards that, making better ski runs. So the entitlements being asked, I'm going to go some steps through this. It is a conditional use permit as part of the process. With the conditional use permit, as I mentioned, there's some ski runs. You can see there kind of in the burnt orange area, those are proposed new areas. You do see kind of in the purple is the snowmaking, and the new lifts as well is being proposed. And I'll zero in a little bit more detail. But that is what our planning commission, when it went in front of them, it was a unanimous decision to recommend approval to the board. But that's the proposal for the conditional use permit as part of it. To zero in a little bit more, you do have the North Star Village location. You'll hear a little bit more about the J-Lift. This is the new one right here that goes up towards the Lookout Mountain location, and then you have Mid Mountain. And again, the orange is representing the new ski area for making it better. Part of the proposal is to add a gondola. Here's 267, and you have the Interceptor Lot, also the Castle Peak Parking Area. They're going to provide a gondola here that goes directly into the village. Part of their analysis, when they reviewed it and they approached staff, obviously there's some problems with traffic coming in here, so they want to allow people to stop right here and park and then provide direct access to the village. And then they can be at the village and then ski and enjoy themselves during that day. The existing terrain improvements, they are doing some improvements on their existing ski trail system. And again, the applicant will go into more detail, but there's several stages they're going to do. And again, this is going to take place in 20 years. It depends on their financing that they have, and this is going to be their blueprint as they start going forward with it. So, but some of the key components of that is the additional design of the CJV, W, and Z lifts and snowmaking. And there is going to be five skier bridges necessary for access. Sawmill Lake Ski Pod, this is also part of the conditional use permit. It's one lift and two trails. This is the Sawmill Pond right here. And part of what I want to explain a little bit, this is unique with these kind of projects, is the Habitat Management Plan. Initially, when we reviewed the project, when they approached us, the EIR, we would review the forest and biology and the terrain. The applicant already did a lot of studies out there, so they actually suggested to staff, this is what we believe is the sensitive areas we want to stay away from. And then we have other areas where it's more, not as sensitive, where we want to have more of the ski industry. So we use that under peer review. We had Pat Angel, our EIR consultant, review it, make those determinations, and we use that as part of our reference and review to see proposed of some of their zone changes, how that relates to their Habitat Management Plan, which I think was quite incredible on their point to approach us already, knowing what their mountain is a on their point to approach us already knowing what their mountain is established with and how they do those types of improvements. So with the other entitlements, there is the Martis Valley Community Plan Amendment. It's a swap of relocating the existing tourist residential commercial land use designation that's there right now as part of the 2003 Martis Valley Community Plan. So they're going to be relocating that. Rezoning to align to existing forest zoning squares, we call it, consistent with the above community plan area. There is no increase in the zoning change. It's actually a relocation. And again, that goes back to the management Habitat Plan. These are the better areas to have those kind of improvements for the ski services at that location. This is a map that is identifying where those changes are. It's relocating over at this location. Here's the new, in the burnt orange again, in the new ski areas. This is the other squares I was talking about relocating again. No increase in size of that zoning. It's just better off, it's not as environmentally sensitive. This is also, when staff reviewed this, is the zoning text amendment. In the TP zoning district, they're surrounded by TPZ zoning. So we looked at potentially, what is staff going to do? We have some options here. It's either a rezone, or we do an amendment to add that particular use there. We looked at other counties to see if they allow this kind of use for ski areas, and they do. Placer County is a little bit unique. North Star is the only one that has the TPZ, where they would have this particular use with ski runs and ski facilities in the TPZ. We wanted to make sure, obviously through public process, that there's ample time for the public to review these kind of things. It requires a conditional use permit, so that's part of the text amendment. So your action today is what staff's recommending is to approve the conditional use permit based on those improvements specifically in the TPZ. If the applicant ever comes back to us, we'd have further environmental analysis as well as review through a conditional use permit to add those kind of facilities there. So again, there's some public process. Part of our review with the applicant, we had some feedback from the community, very concerned about the TPZ, what kind of effect it would have, especially on tax purposes. You know, we do have the assessor department reviews anything improvement-wise that would do, they would have to assess it appropriately. But there is, that's part of the text amendment explanation there. And the green, it shows where the conditional use permit, where those improvements are going to be in the TPZ, which is at those locations. So part of the environmental analysis that we did, we did also a program level review. So that's allowing the applicant to provide us some information of long range, beyond the 20 years potentially, what kind of improvements they may do. So again, they would have to come back to us through a public hearing. But the EIR, because they already have consultants out there reviewing biology and other information that we need to put in our document, they're already daylighting that for us. So we put that in the document. So this is the program level. There are several things that the applicant has approached us with and the environmental analysis has addressed. And that being the Q lift and associated terrain improvements, fuel tanks, Castle Peak parking area, Gondola alignment, four program-level ski service sites, additional non-ski and recreation activities. And I'll tell you about that in just a second, which is right here, which is potential for future campground areas. And again, that's through further review, analysis, and public process. But that is something the applicant has approached us and reviewed. So because we did step back from this a little bit, there was some discussion from a neighbor organization. They approached the applicant to say we have some problems with water quality. So we stepped back a little bit. And so the environmental impact reports, what we did back in 2014, we analyzed everything we could. But then, because we have now a new document coming forward, we had to do an errata. So there's five key components we put into the errata that we are asking for action by the board to take. Is the North Star Basin retrofit project, the Martis Valley West parcel specific plan, the amendment to the Martis Valley Community Plan area, which is the East Side Emergency Evacuation Plan, clean energy and pollution, and the adoption of the Amendment of California Global Warming also. So we are asking the board to take action on that. There are two items that we did review that had significant and unavoidable impacts. One of them is the visual, and I'll have some more slides to show that. Air quality is the other. We had to look at the worst-case scenario because of the short construction season in the area, and the applicant can't come forward right away and say, I want to construct this all at once. We had to look at that worst case, and that is unavoidable impact is all the construction equipment that's out there providing emissions. So the impacts, you see the existing and the proposed. It's a little hard to see, but you can see over here the new ski runs popping up here. So we tried to address that as much as we could, and actually we have tree islands around some of the ski areas, so it's not a swath of huge ski runs where people go down. We're trying to incorporate some areas where there's tree islands, where there's quite a bit of vegetation still. So it's not as much impact on the visual, but we have to disclose there is some visual effects because they are clearing out some trees in those areas. But you can see some of the visuals there. And this is as well, as you see view from 89. This is coming up from, this is the north side of 80, as you can see from there. And this is also some of the visuals you can see. This is the view corridors you look over Donner Lake. So some of the key issues that we're looking at, again, the Habitat Management Plan was our blueprint that we use for our environmental analysis. We use that as a resource to provide that information for us to review. Employee housing was another huge component on this particular project. North Star is very key. They're one of the leaders out there in the Martis Valley area, knowing that this is a problem. They need employees. At first, staff was looking at 100% construction. But then after discussing with them, as well as internally a little bit more, we realized they might have some employees that are hired, and maybe they don't want to be right away at the housing that's built for them. Maybe they can find something on their own and find a house that they want to be at. So we included up to 75%. We have to provide construction for this particular project, and we would be monitoring that through a program. They would approach us with that information, and then we show how they would be able to construct that. They have been actively looking at land out there, but obviously they need their entitlements before they start locking in things. But there is a condition in the proposal we have in front of the board about the workforce housing. The hydrology and water quality, again, that goes to the North Star Basin retrofit. There were some concerns initially, quite a number of years ago. That has been resolved, that is constructed. Parking, and this is something the public brought up quite a bit too. This particular project is actually improvements on the mountain itself, is to disperse the skiers that come up there to provide better use of the mountain, so they're not concentrated there. So the key on this particular project, you know, they have existing parking that's there, and that's where people are going to park, and that's limiting how many people they can have up the mountain. So they're not proposing any additional parking. Basically, again, they're making the mountain better, what they have for this particular The emergency evacuation, staff has reviewed. They do, they have been discussing with North Star Fire District and other life and safety personnel that are out there about their emergency evacuation. They do have a plan for that that we have reviewed. The TPZ, I mentioned, it does allow alternative uses that is there right now. It's quite a bit of area and land. And so there's having North Star be able to expand and include skiing in there. And again, the applicant will explain that's something that's unique with North Star, is having these forested area, and people want to go skiing, not necessarily getting too close to the trees, but to have that experience in the wilderness, so they can ski around. Correspondence received. I will have Patrick talk to you a little bit about it. We have received some information that's some concerns about some of the environmental impacts. So again, staff has reviewed that, and we've had our consultant look at it, so he will discuss that briefly. This particular project has gone in front of NITRAC, which is our North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council in Tahoe. It was recommended to planning commission as well as the board for approval. And like I mentioned, our planning commission, it went the last few weeks, unanimous recommendation to the board for approval. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Pat to real briefly talk about the correspondence.
Before we go to Pat, let's see if we have any questions for you. Jim?
Thank you for your presentation. I'm looking at, I'm talking about the employee housing. And I appreciate the applicant supplying 75%. Later on, on page 32 of our staff report, it talks about the ability to pay an in-look fee for 13 FTEs. So is that included in the 75% or is that above the 75%?
It's the 110 that they would have to take care of as part of the mitigation. So 75% is the obligation, was 42.
And the 13% would bring it up to 55, is that?
The outstanding would go in-look fee, or they would do as buy land as possible through our, you know, our general plan. But they're obligated, that 75% is the 42 full-time equivalent.
All right, good, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, have we done any evaluation to determine whether or not the businesses that we entitle actually meet or exceed the number of employees that are, you know, that we put in a document? Because it would seem to me to be that if they're very successful, they would put on more employees than, you know, that are in the book, and that therefore it would behoove us to try to put a high and a low, and then check in, you know, periodically to determine whether or not they've reached that in that document. You know, because I'm a little bit troubled by, you know, because I think your explanation, while interesting, when someone, you know, when we're talking about 100%, and then you go down to 75, or, you know, it just seems like we're just throwing away, you know, an opportunity to meet that need, just because they want to do some other alternative. You know, we've got a serious problem up there.
Yeah, we do.
And, you know, anytime we're negotiating down is not a good thing. We need to be negotiating up.
Right.
So can you tell me about that?
Yeah, absolutely. What we do is part of the environmental analysis, we look at specifically what they're doing, the best information we have at that time. So what they're telling us with the particular development, this is the number of new full-time equivalent employees. And we have to look at it too, if they provide, you know, they get administrative help or something, or other seasonal help, we have to say, okay, that's a partial of it, but we have to look at full-time and then see what that exact number is. And that's good hard fact information at the time we do have is in the EIR. So what we do is staff, which is very good, Jack, what we do is we have to look at a housing monitoring plan. So with these entitlements, once we approve this particular project, we're saying we're zeroing in, this is the information our EIR is telling us. But the housing monitoring plan, they provide us more data, exactly what exactly they're going to be doing. And then we have improvement plan stages and building permit stages. They're in contact with us and saying, this is our numbers. You know, this is the hard fast numbers we have. And then we go back and say, aha, well, you got 75%. This is hard line. We got it, you're going to have to build it. So and then we go back to them, and they have to tell us how they're doing it. If they don't, then we have to come back to you and say, you know, they can't meet that. But you're right, there is, there's on occasions, and that's why staff couldn't say 100% either, because we know there needed to be a little bit of flexibility in there, because if they did hire somebody, it's a relative, maybe they wanted to sell them their house, and they would stay there permanently. So we wanted to say, give us some flexibility with that. But there is, you're absolutely right, there is potential maybe increase of the number of employees, but that housing monitoring plan will tell us.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that the developers are trying to game the system. All I'm saying is that we've got a problem, and we've got to address it. And like I said, going down doesn't seem to be addressing it. And maybe some more intense oversight on that and follow-up. You know, I know in some of our tax share agreements, we, you know, have agreed to go back and take a look, and that's why I say maybe a high-low in there to, you know, so we can actually form-fit it. I don't know what that does legally to the SECA document. That's for Jerry and his team to figure out. But, you know, there needs to be a way that we can validate what's going on, because if the developer is successful, I want him to be successful, then, you know, there's a price for that down the road. Maybe they're putting on, maybe they do put on more people. I don't know that, but I think we need to know in order to better address this problem. So that's all I got to say.
And Supervisor Duran, if I may, you raised what's a really valid question that I think all of us have been struggling with, certainly over the last couple of years, which is how do we ask developments to meet their obligations for housing and, you know, what restrictions can we put on them? What's being proposed today, obviously, is what's in place. We are, it's my understanding, in I think early March, going to be having a presentation on some options for how we could update our requirements around housing. And I think your suggestion, please bring it back at that point, because I think it's well worth including in that larger conversation. Any other questions for Alan before we move on to the consultant? Okay.
And then I'll mention too further is the applicant, you know, we have been discussing with them. They have some ideas and strategies as well. We've been trying to connect some other dots on some other projects as well, because land is starting to, you can't recreate land either. So we have to make sure that that's available, and then we do have that housing that's there. So there is some behind-the-scenes type discussion right now to make sure that it meets those requirements. Right, exactly, Jack. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Pat, and then I'll finish up real briefly on my PowerPoint presentation after you.
Good morning, Chair Montgomery Supervisors. Again, my name's Pat Angel. I'm the project manager on the EIR. Just a little background, I've been involved with managing the EIRs on all the major projects in North Star since 2000, 2003, so I've got quite a bit of background. I'm going to highlight a couple of key issues that have come up since release of the final EIR, including some correspondence that came in last night in regards to the environmental analysis. The first issues that were brought up had to do with timber production zone, TPZ zoning, and whether or not the EIR adequately addressed compatibility with that. It was addressed in the environmental document. It was identified specifically what facilities of the project would end up in the TPZ zoning. The key aspect is timber harvest operations are going to occur during the summer, and the ski facilities, of course, won't be in operation at times. So there really isn't a conflict issue there. There was concerns that the EIR didn't address the impacts of the forest. There's a rather substantial analysis, both on the biological resources and water quality and visual effects associated with the tree removal. There's a mitigation measure, 6-9, that actually requires one-to-one replacement enhancement of the trees lost to improve the overall forest in coordination with the Habitat Management Plan that's been developed by North Star. Also, there were concerns expressed that the EIR didn't address the potential inducement of new ski facilities and other TPZ lands with other ski resorts. The EIR does acknowledge that both Squaw Valley, Alpine Meadows, Royal Gorge, and Sugar Bowl, while their boundaries don't include TPZ lands, they are adjacent to TPZ lands. And there is the potential that, yes, they could acquire that land and expand ski facilities there. However, the zoning text changes before you just makes ski facilities a conditional use, doesn't allow them by rights. So there's no direct inducement that would necessitate an approval of ski facilities. It would require dismissal for a conditional use permit, that would trigger environmental review. And to date, there hasn't been a request considered, I believe, right now for any other ski resorts to look at TPZ lands. There were a series of comments submitted by the North Star Village Association, most recently last night, that involve two items. One is noise, and the other is traffic. The first issue in regards to noise was whether or not the survey locations we took when we went out and took noise surveys for purposes of preparing the EIR were adequate. The noise surveys that were done were of purposes of determining the ambient air qual, excuse me, noise conditions in the general vicinity of the proposed lift facilities, in this particular case, the proposed J-Lift. They weren't intended to determine whether or not the existing ski operations associated with Gondola are meeting current noise standards by the county. The analysis identified that the J-Lift, we conservatively assumed that the emergency generators could have been located at the bottom of the resort, of the ski lift downhill, and evaluated noise impacts, didn't identify any significant impacts based on that. Subsequently, we were informed by the applicant that the drive and the emergency facilities would actually be at the top of the mountain, thus that noise source is substantially far away from any noise-sensitive sources. Thus, the noise levels associated with the operation of the proposed J-Lift would be about 35 dB at about 100 feet, which is indistinguishable on the background noises. There were concerns that the county should address the existing or potential existing issues with the noise from the existing operation, the Gondola. Certainly, that could be a compliance issue with those previous. Certainly, that could be a compliance issue with those, with those previous approvals, but they're not associated with this proposed project. SEQA doesn't, the California Environmental Quality Act doesn't allow you to go back and retroactively deal with an existing condition. In regards to traffic, there were concerns about how the existing upper roundabout at the village is operated and that that triggers a traffic issue on North Star Drive. There were concerns that, that in turn was causing issues that the traffic analysis hadn't addressed. Certainly is acknowledged, particularly during the heavy ski weekends, President's Day weekend in particular, you're going to have some temporary congestion, you're going to have some frustration of people trying to pick up and drop off at the upper roundabout. The traffic analysis, however, does look at what's referred to as the thirtieth worst peak hour winter condition, which is the, the parking lots at North Star are full and you have that sort of condition. It specifically evaluates and refers to a noise, a traffic condition that happened on January fifteenth of two thousand and eleven. There are traffic counts that have been taken since two thousand. That particular date was the second highest ski day, ski visitor day at North Star. That was the basis in which we ran the traffic analysis. Even in those circumstances, the interior, interior intersections within North Star operate properly. There is operations on two sixty-seven that are deficient, but this project doesn't make that substantially worse than it already operates. There is also some concerns that the EIR relies on summer counts. Well, the EIR provides a winter analysis and a summer analysis, because the North Star Mountain Master Plan includes summer facilities. So we were not using summer counts to do a winter analysis, we were using summer counts to analyze summer conditions. In regards to safety, emergency access, I believe that Alan's already mentioned that North Star has provided their EPEP, their evacuation and preparation plan, which identifies a very detailed plan about evacuation and multiple ways to get people out in the case of an emergency. They also, as part of their, you know, manual traffic control, can, can moderate and address traffic issues as they need to, to be able to get emergency vehicles in and out as well as people. With that, I'm happy to elaborate on any issues, answer any questions.
Any questions from any member of the board? I did have one question, there was a third issue that was raised and I just want to understand it, and that was regarding a pedestrian path. It says it fails to address the shorter pedestrian routes that ski resort patrons will utilize. I'm assuming that's referring to some sort of shortcut rather than the proposed pedestrian path. My question is, is there a obligation under SEQA to analyze alternative routes that people may or may not take?
Well, the question becomes, does that necessarily trigger a, a physical effect on the environment or a sudden, you know, public health or safety issue? Our review of that, the, the short answer was no. I mean, it's acknowledged that, the concern was that the upper roundabout people may walk further up North Star Drive to access to the lifts rather than going through the village. Certainly, if I had my lift ticket and I wanted to get on the mountain right away, I might do that myself. Based on our review, we didn't see that that was necessarily something that rose to a physical effect on the environment or, or a health effect that the EIR needed to address. There may be issues about access and, and private property, but those aren't things that the EIR would get into.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from anyone on this? Okay, Alan?
I'll wrap it up real quick here. I talked about that one already, there is, for disclosure and information, there's a small section, right, of the project that North Star does own that's outside Marthis Valley, it's actually in TRPA area, you can see at this location. Now, this is the plan area statement that currently exists, we have reviewed it, the new area plan as well. So this particular project would require TRPA approval, so they are aware of that, but the applicant has to further go to TRPA and get their entitlements. We do require design site review of the, because they have the grill right here, they want to do an expansion of the deck, so we would review it through design site review, building plans and improvement plans as well. Also, there's some ski make, uh, ski making, there's some snowmaking at this location right here. So just a information that so you're aware of. So we are asking to have the board take several actions. I will have this at the end of the PowerPoint after North Star as well, but there are five actions we are asking the board to make if they so choose to approve the project. So I'm going to hand it over to North Star and, I wonder why that went out? There we go, whoops. Their presentation.
Greg and Jeremy, can we get the North Star Mountain Master Plan presentation back up on the screens?
But yeah, so Nadia is here and then she'll introduce her team when that gets set up.
Good morning. Perhaps you can introduce yourself and then we'll, in the meantime, get the presentation back up on the screen.
Okay.
There we are.
There we go. Good morning, Madam Chair Montgomery and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Nadia Guerrero and in December, I was named Vice President and General Manager of North Star. I've been a part of this resort since two thousand and seven and I'm thrilled to be in this seat presenting the master plan, which I've personally been a part of for a decade. Today, I will briefly reintroduce you to our resort and then ask my planning team to walk through the master plan in detail. As you know, we presented to the Plaster County Planning Commission on February second and received a great response with a unanimous vote in our favor, so we're looking forward to presenting this to you today. North Star opened in nineteen seventy-two, offering some of the best skiing and winter snow activities to the region. Throughout the years, we've evolved into a family-friendly resort with a relaxed style that is unique to the region. In two thousand and eleven, we were acquired by Vale Resorts as the second resort in Tahoe, in the Tahoe region along with Heavenly. Our North Star brand is focused on combining California relaxation with a sophisticated Alpine experience and unprecedented guest service. We are also focused on providing an unparalleled employee experience. Over the expected life of the North Star Mountain Master Plan, we want to further improve the guest and employee experience by taking the mountain to the next level. The master plan presented before you today is designed to be a resort roadmap for the next two decades, intended to encourage longer guest stays, accommodate existing and approved residential and lodging units, and retain our competitive edge as a premier destination resort. Our plan provides guests and residents with a wider, more diverse array of terrain offerings, new ski lift, new ski lifts and on-mountain services. Together, these enhancements will bring an improved and extended vacation experience for the destination and day use guest. Our master plan does not include any additional onsite lodging, real estate development or day use parking. The plan consists of on-mountain recreational and ski or service improvements. Our goal is to provide experiences of lifetime for our guests and for our employees, and this plan reinforces our ability to do this properly and thoughtfully. For several years, we've worked closely with our community stakeholders to receive feedback and we will continue to do so, to meet the changing needs of the ski industry, environmental and conservation priorities, as well as community issues. Unless you have questions for me, I'd like to introduce Andrew Strain, who is our Vice President of Planning and Governmental Affairs, to walk you through the master plan in more detail. Other members of our North Star Planning and Operations Teams who are here today to respond to your questions include Jerusha Hall, Jen Mater, Scott Sibilia, and our legal counsel, Beth Collins-Bergard. We also have a couple of folks in Tahoe City, which I guess you can see, we can't see them. Andrew Buckley and Marcy Bradley are in Tahoe City for anyone sitting in the virtual audience as well.
Nadia, thank you. I don't see any questions from my board members, so let's bring Andrew forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Andrew Strain, I'm going to hand out for you one of our current trail maps to add to the record. And I'll use that in part of my presentation. Thank you for hearing our item this morning. I also want to thank the staff for their stick-to-it-iveness as they've worked with us over a number of years to bring this process before you today, to actually have a chance to address you. So I know there have been changes on your side, staff-wise, on our side, staff-wise and leadership-wise of, as you've heard, and we're, we're very thankful for their hard work and for their stick-to-it-iveness to get this before you today. Master plan is the right thing to do for our resort. It's something our company believes in. Master plan is the right solution for the mountain itself. You can see the benefits Nadia has mentioned to, them to you briefly. It's a twenty-year vision, it outlines the overall plan for improvements, it outlines our capital investment strategy, which is important to us from an internal basis, and it allows us to communicate with our stakeholders of what we're up to on a broad vision and not a piece-by-piece approach. I think Supervisor Montgomery is aware, we have a unique component of it that Alan described to you briefly, that's the Habitat Management Plan. This was done first, before the master plan was done. I'll get into it in a little more detail here momentarily, but it is the piece of the puzzle that allows us to design the environment around the ski resort, so the two work in balance together. We think it's the right approach and we think it's the thing that actually is a model for the ski industry as a whole. We also believe the benefits of a master plan allow us project phasing and flexibility. We can respond to market demands as they change. It's a highly competitive market, we're competing with Sun Valley, Jackson Hole, Utah, other resorts in Colorado for the tourism dollar, and we know we have to remain competitive and have the best product available. Our goal, as Nadia mentioned, is to provide the experience of a lifetime for our guests as well as our employees. It is focused on the destination guest who comes to North Star or has property there already, who comes and stays for several days at a time. We have got lots of capacity that we can house them in and meet their needs, particularly in the mid-week basis. This is not a plan that's focused on adding to the peak time itself. The plan incorporates a number of project design features that are intended to balance the high-quality public recreation opportunity along with conserving our important natural resources. We think that's the right approach. In responding to our destination market, we know in our business that it is much easier to keep an existing customer and less expensive than it is to go out and find a new customer to replace that existing customer with, and that's what we think we've done here. This does respond to a dynamic market and we believe we have the right approach for you. These are some of the objectives you see on the screen from the Habitat Management Plan to the experience itself that we essentially set the stage for. I'll get to the trail map in just a minute, but here is a table that summarizes the difference between today and what the master plan includes. The new plan includes five new lifts, the transportation gondola from down at the remote parking lots that Alan mentioned, and a new surface or handle toe lift. It includes twenty-five new ski trails that equal approximately a hundred and seventy-five acres in area, and about four hundred acres of glated skiing, which is a partial removal of trees in order to create a forested experience which our guests love and frankly is quite a bit of fun. We've got snowmaking to propose to add to thirteen existing trails and then twelve of the new trails, totals about three hundred acres. We do have new on-mountain lodges and warming huts proposed, each are sized to fit the amount of people that will be in that area, that pod of trail terrain that we have, and we're going to move the cross-country ski center, which today is not a high-quality experience. We think we've got a great place to put it. And we propose to expand the summit deck and grill, which is that little piece that's in the Tahoe Basin. It's, it's really right on the boundary line. You can't see it from Tahoe, it's hidden by the trees and the landforms, so we're optimistic that the TRPA who approved that the first time would approve an expansion to it if we're successful. We also will relocate up to the new cross-country ski center, parking spaces that are internal so that the cross-country visitor can get to the site and have their own parking. This is the trail map that you have in front of you today. Alan outlined several of the improvements. The old front side of the mountain, which is on the left-hand side of the trail map, was the original North Star. It was developed at a time when ski trails were very narrow and essentially one person wide. Those are back in the days of the head three sixty skis and black leather lace-up boots and that's changed from the seventies. That's a, it's a different world now, so we're proposing to widen the runs in that part of the mountain. Over in the middle part of the mountain, we have developed most recently, we're not proposing anything really in the way of changes, because that has been developed most recently in the last five to ten years and that we believe meets the needs today from skier density, run width and lift capacity. Over on the far right side of the mountain, we have a great opportunity for us for that off-piste or forested glated skiing opportunity called Sawtooth Ridge. We go out there today when the snow's deep enough, which this year it obviously is, and we would propose to add some lift capacity out there so more people can get out there and enjoy it safely. On the lower left-hand side of the mountain, as you can see on the trail maps, that's where the village and the mid-mountain areas that are extremely congested today, we'd like to add another lift out of the village to help people get up on the mountain more quickly when we need it. That's the J-Lift that you've heard mentioned, which will be a top-driven lift with the auxiliary power unit at the top, which helps with noise concerns. Frankly, it's a more efficient drive system for a modern lift, and that's what you do anyways from a physics standpoint. It's better to pull a lift up the hill than to try and push it up the hill. On the lower right-hand side of the screen and the trail map, that's the existing pot of terrain that's been developed and expanded over the years with the addition of Marthis Camp. Marthis Camp sits at the very bottom of that lift, the Marthis Lookout Express Lift and Trails, and there really no changes proposed to that. The trail map frankly reads a little better than this map, which is technically accurate but perhaps not as interesting to look at visually. As Alan mentioned, the new trails starting all the way over on the left-hand side of this map, they coincide with the trail map in terms of orientation. On the left would be the new pot of terrain down to Sawmill Pond, that's where the cross-country center would be relocated also. Run widening in the front side of North Star, the old part. Run widening on the backside, which is also an old part of us, the Sawmill Glade, I'm sorry, the Sawtooth Ridge piece of it that you can see right there on the map, that's where we would add the glated experience. This is kind of what it looks like in there, and this is what we would propose to serve with lifts so that more people can get out there. It's a great experience when you're out in it. What I want to talk about is the partnerships that we've also worked on this master plan with. Mountain Area Preservation Foundation and Sierra Watts were at the table with us during the development of the master plan and the Habitat Management Plan. They actually did an independent analysis between the two to understand if they were aligned or not, and they have concluded that they were aligned. The Habitat Management Plan, or the HMP, was aligned with the master plan. They're consistent from a biologic standpoint. We felt that collaboration on the front end of the process was the right way to approach this planning process, so we did. Can talk a little bit in detail about the Habitat Management Plan, this is a schematic map. Again, it's the same orientation as the trail map. It is zoned from A through E. The village and mid-mountain are again on your lower left-hand side. Most suitable for development, Zone A, ranges all the way out through the western edge of the resort where you see the green and the beige colors. The least suitable area for development is Zone E, that's the most valuable in terms of conservation goals. So that's the way the master plan has been developed. You can see very little in the way of proposed new development in Zone E. We basically use that for conservation of wildlife and biologic species that are out there. There's riparian corridors out there, you can see the blue line streams, and there are also species of interest out there, as well as some old growth or late cereal conifer forests that we intend to conserve. This is part of what we have been active with in terms of implementing the Habitat Management Plan, to reduce fuel loads, to reduce the ladder effective fuels on the ground, which were over-dense, as you know they are in most, much of the Sierra. Our partner of North Star Fire has done most of the work that you see in the green on the map, in and around the village, the halo so to speak. We've really concentrated our work up mountain as we should in the burnt orange areas, and then out to the west in the blue areas. Those are our responsibility for the Habitat Management Plan. The point I'd like to make is that we work in partnership with North Star Fire, from grants to figuring out our own priorities for fuel and forestry work, and we think that partnership goes very well and works. This is the Habitat Management Plan itself, it's a guide for our resource management within the eight-thousand acre resort. You can see the individual elements that go with it, that are in the plan, these are essentially the topics. These are essentially the topics it covers. At the bottom, you'll see the conservation easement that we work with the Truckee Donner Land Trust. When we set lands aside for long-term, permanent conservation, they're held by Truckee Donner Land Trust, so we consider them to be a partner in this. This is something I wanted to make sure you were able to see because we've had emergency preparedness as part of our standard operations for as long as I've been involved with the resort. We've just never put it all in one place and shared it with the public. We've never been asked to frankly, until now, and so what you'll see are the individual elements that are in our emergency evacuation plan. Six different egress routes. We've got parking lot staging areas. The snowmaking system, one of the unique things about ski resorts is we can leave that charge during the summertime, and it acts as a fire suppression system. All ski resorts are doing that now. We learned particularly at Heavenly during the Gondola Fire of 2002. That's what stopped it, was having the ability to turn on our snowmaking system and give the firefighters out in the back country water where they didn't think they were going to get it. There's an annual preparedness drill that we conduct with both North Tahoe Fire as well as North Star Fire, where we get together, which is the right thing to do. You can see the treatment of fuels since 2005. We also have recently from Cal Fire received a THP, a timber harvest plan, to allow us to continue that fuels management. This is the end of my remarks. I did want to address a couple of things, particularly one that Supervisor Durant raised. Each of our improvements that are in the Master Plan before you are designed to achieve a certain objective or meet a certain need that we don't have today. Otherwise, they wouldn't be in the plan. We think it's a well-thought-out and solid plan, and it balances both the recreation opportunities with the environmental resources that we have at North Star, which we take great pride in being good stewards of. We agree with the mitigation measures that are in the plan, as the environmental consultant has proposed, and that includes the workforce housing. And I'll just make a couple of observations about that. Today at North Star, there's a 270-unit complex called Sawmill Heights that we are a partner, a founding partner in. It's got about 1,080 beds. We're overwhelmingly the majority occupant of that. Our employees live there. The number of employees that we have disclosed in the document would be a maximum, 110 FTEs by each one of those additional facilities, whether it's a lodge or a lift or additional snowmaking. We're not going to exceed that. There's a business reason not to exceed that. Part of our charge as the leaders of the resort are to manage labor and manage labor expenses. You all know this from your own roles, as that's probably the greatest expense that we all have. So our intention is not to achieve, not to exceed that. One of the details of the mitigation measure is that we present to the county, within six months of action, an employee housing mitigation plan where we spell out the details. We have, to this point, come to agreement on what it is we're trying to do. It will now be, if you adopt the plan and give us direction, it will be our responsibility to come back within six months and tell you how we're going to do it. We did have great discussion with your staff about the percentages that you mentioned, Supervisor, and why we're doing that. We wanted to leave the door open for at least a fraction of the employee needs to be met through payment of a fee. And the reason behind this is we believe that several of the more regional solutions that are out there involve working as partners or in joint ventures. So there might be an opportunity for the county, some of the other large employers, and North Star to come together and say, "We're all putting resources into one project." And that might include money. That's why we left a small fraction, 25%, of the number that we are obligated to do to see if perhaps there isn't a joint partnership out there. We're seasonal, and we know that many of the Tahoe employers are seasonal opposite us. They're busier in the summertime. What I think's going to work the best in many cases is working with those seasonal employers in the summer to fund a project together that we'll use primarily in the winter and they'll use primarily in the summer. I think Supervisor Montgomery does know, we've been at the table since the formative days of the Truckee-North Tahoe Regional Housing Initiatives and Coalition. Our intention, that I would tell you, is to stay at the table. We will be there, and we will be a partner. It's good for us as a business, it's good for our employees, and frankly, it's the right thing to do for the community, and we intend to stand up and do that. So I think that was an excellent question about why. What I believe is before you today is something that is completely consistent with your existing county plans and policies, and that we mitigated 100% of the additional employees that would be built over a 20-year time span, which we realize from a capital standpoint and the way our company funds capital investment, it's not going to happen all at once. It just doesn't. Particularly after five not very good years financially, we're not at the top of the capital list, so to speak, for funding. I'm happy to answer any questions. I would appreciate the opportunity to reserve some time at the very end of the public hearing in order to respond to questions or comments that are brought up or to answer any of your questions further. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions or comments from any member of the board? Okay.
Thank you.
Alan, was there anything additionally before I opened the public hearing? Okay. I am opening the public hearing on this agenda item. This is the opportunity for any member of the audience, either here or in Tahoe, to come forward. What I would like to do actually so is to keep confusion to a minimum is, I'd actually like to start with the folks who are in Tahoe and allow them the opportunity to raise any questions or comments, and then I'll bring it back down here to the folks here in Auburn and allow you to come forward and raise whatever questions, concerns, kudos, that you've got. So if we could start with Tahoe City there. Whoever would like to comment on this item, if you would come forward to the podium, identify yourself and weigh in on this. I'm not seeing anyone leap out of a chair. If there's someone, please come forward. I thought I was talking to myself again.
Hi. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. Sandy Evans Hall with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, resident of Carnelian Bay, and I am here to just let you know that there are several things, at least a couple of things I'm going to mention today, that truly align with the 2015 Tourism Development Master Plan and also with the NLTRA, Board of Directors Strategic Goals. The first of those is the, really, the experience that North Star is planning in this 20-year vision for enhancing the destination traveler coming to North Lake Tahoe. This is something that we've identified as a top priority in the tourism master plan as well as our strategic goals, in trying to get those people that are traveling by air or longer distances, that come here, that enjoy that, really, especially, I didn't want to see myself. Trying to, you know, to look at this experience that they're going to be providing with the improved services on the mountain. And so this really truly aligns with our top priority. Another priority that we have is our transit vision, which is now the Placer County Transportation Systems Plan, and in trying to make sure that we're really improving the ability to move people around, the more destination visitors that we get here, the less people that are driving in on the day traffic and from the weekends, and so we believe that it's going to enhance that. We also want to say that Tony Karowski, who is here in the audience right behind me, and he has been a very active participant in our Transit Vision Coalition and in everything that we're doing to try and mitigate the transportation issues on 267 and 89. And then thirdly, I just want to give kudos to the environmental collaboration that this plan really is taking on. So from early in the process to really develop this Habitat Management Plan in conjunction with the local environmental groups, I think is really, really extraordinary. So I encourage you to approve this environmentally sound plan and help to, you know, help to make some of our goals in terms of our tourism master plan come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else up in Tahoe who would like to speak on this agenda item? This is a public hearing. This is your opportunity. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tim Fulton. I work for a company called Tahoe Mountain Lodging, the General Manager for Community Association Management and Short-Terminal Operations at North Star. The association that we manage is called the North Star Village Association. The Board President of the North Star Village Association, Daniel Casabian, submitted a letter last evening, and he's requested that I attend the session today to read this letter, if I could, to the Board of Supervisors. He also forward this-
Let me interrupt. If this is the letter that we received last night, we all do have a copy of it, and I believe you've read it. You'll have, on behalf of the organization, five minutes to present. I think you would not be able to get through the letter in that time, but I think you can be reassured that we all have read it, if you wanted to just kind of hit the high points.
Okay. If I could, then maybe just read the first couple pages, the synopsis.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, "We request that the Board of Supervisors reject the NMP DEIR FER as inadequate and send it back to the Planning Department to address three significant flaws to the NMP DEIR FER that understate the NMP's environmental and substantial health and safety impacts on our members and on the public at large. Number one, the NMP noise report, Section 11 of DER, is flawed. It does not account for noise impacts for closest residential properties to the bottom terminal of the proposed J-Lift. Number two, the NMP traffic report, Section 9 of DER, is flawed. It is based on improper summertime data, and the NMP Traffic Management Plan relies on use of a vehicle drop-off air at the top of North Star Drive, also known as the upward turnaround, that is incapable of facilitating the current amount of drop-off traffic in the busiest ski season, let alone the foreseeable increases in congestion that result from the NMP's implementation, thereby jeopardizing an emergency route for North Star Fire Departments and ambulances and use of North Star Drive and neighboring streets by all types of vehicle traffic, e.g., vehicle residential owner cars, resorts, transport buses, and public transportation. Number three, the NMP's pedestrian path through the village and the tunnel of the J-Lift is flawed. It failed to address the shorter pedestrian routes that the ski resort patrons will utilize, and that will expose those pedestrians to hazardous conflicts with vehicular traffic without adequate separation. We raised these flaws with the Planning Commission, and fortunately, they remain unaddressed. We believe our timing has resulted in the resorts and planning departments minimizing these issues to the commissioners, to the commission, and likely will do so with the Board of Supervisors in an effort to get the NMP approved. In fact, remains to be addressed, the issues exist and must be addressed, either by a further study by the Planning Department to account for them, or by their resorts, conceding their validity and committing to their mitigation as suggested in this letter." So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if there is someone there as well from NPOA, they also have time to address this as a separate entity.
Okay.
I understand you were speaking on behalf of NVA?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else up in Tahoe who would like to comment on this? There we go.
Good morning, Chair. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I am Jeff Stevens, General Manager of the North Star Property Owners Association, which Chair Montgomery just alluded to. We also do have concerns about the J-Lift, primarily just the alignment because it's conceptual and preliminary. We had some other concerns in regards to whether it be a bottom drive or a top drive. They answered that today. We think that's terrific. We do support the Master Plan and the Habitat Plan. We think it's good, but like every good plan, there's always issues of concerns, and the J-Lift is one of them. One of the things not even discussed is the potential tunnel underneath Ski Trails Drive, how the entire J-Lift and tunnel are going to work. So our request really is, we brought this to the Planning Commission and asked for the conditions of approval to be amended. That was not taken into consideration, or they took it into consideration, but they didn't think it was necessary. They did extend the direction or question to North Star staff that continual conversations in regards to the alignment would continue. It hasn't been great conversation, but there is. But we'd like to know exactly when that lift starts to get planned, that we are able to take a look at it and make sure that the plan's not so far ahead that our input doesn't matter. So we'd like to be included in the process. We think it's, we're not against the J-Lift. It's contiguous to some of our properties, not many homes, but it's there, it's right in the heart of the village, and I think there's more than just us that would be affected by the alignment, and that's our request. So happy to answer any questions. Also, my Board President, Brian West, is in Auburn and can answer additional questions, and he'll be making a statement later in the public comment period, so.
Thank you, Jeff, and I do see Mr. West in the audience, so you are ably represented here today.
Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment from Tahoe City? Is there anyone else? This is your last opportunity. I'll be bringing it back down here to Auburn. Okay. I see no one leaping out of their chairs. Anyone here in Auburn like to come forward and comment on this item? Now is your opportunity.
Good morning, Madam Supervisor and the Board of Supervisors. My name is Mike Reitzel. I am the President of the California Ski Industry Association. We are a nonprofit association. We have 29 members, of which North Star is one of them. What we really base ourselves upon are three pillars of safety, sustainability, and sports, snow sport advocacy. We think that the North Star Master Plan really hits on all of those things in terms of what we look at from a broader view as an entire industry as opposed to on the resort-specific level. Most importantly, as Mr. Strain commented, it allows North Star to remain competitive in the industry and allows us, as the California industry, to remain competitive across what we have, when you look at the rest of the country, as a tremendous amount of competition. If you look at what's going on in other states, in Utah and Colorado, there really is a significant attention when it comes to what they're doing in terms of their improvements and their innovations to look at the destination visitor, the people that decide they're going to come for a week. And really, what's more important in the Tahoe area is that Monday-through-Friday crowd. Those folks that come and are going to stay there and go to our local businesses in the Truckee Tahoe area, and really, this is something I know that we're trying to do across the state. When you look at Reno, there's been definitely an increase in the air travel to the Tahoe area, so just a very important aspect that we need for them to look at us and realize that we're trying to stay competitive. Very impressed with the HMP, the Conservation Plan, the Employee Housing. These are very important issues to our industry, and we appreciate that North Star has taken the time to address them. Also, this really does support the local economy. You know, we as an industry have a $1.3 billion impact on California's economy. As we go, so do these local areas, and when you add, when you add lifts, when you have this type of terrain expansion, it's going to be adding jobs to the area, and then what that does, when that brings in the visitors, it adds jobs to all the businesses that are in the local areas, and we hope to be really a part of that trickle-down effect. And lastly, the skier circulation and terrain expansion, we think is just a great improvement at North Star because they're not seeking to add more people to the mountain, just simply spread them out in a safer fashion, and that would include the trail widening, safety being an important aspect of what we do. We're very concerned with that. Collisions are probably one of your number-one incident-causing events, and this goes directly to that to help mitigate that issue. So for those reasons, we would encourage the Board to approve the Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? Mr. West, good to see you.
Good to be here. Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Brian West. I have been a property owner and part-time resident of North Star for 17 years. I've been a member of the Board of the North Star Property Owners Association since 2008, and I currently serve as the Board President. Our association represents approximately 1,500 property owners in the North Star community. So right off the bat, I would like to say that our association does support the North Star Mountain Master Plan, and we recommend that you approve it. For the record, we have submitted a letter to the Board stating that we do support the plan, and as our General Manager mentioned a few minutes ago, we've also requested some ability to provide input for the details of these projects, if and when they're actually constructed. We support all the projects described in the Master Plan. We appreciate the energy and investment that Vail is planning to make in our resort area and our community. We think that it will be a benefit to all, not the least of which being the Placer County tax collector, and we hope that you will find it in your interest to approve it today. tax collector, and we hope that you will find it in your interest to approve it today. In closing, I would like to say that personally, as a civil engineer and someone who's worked in development for many years, I see this master plan as being an example of thoughtful, forward-thinking planning that we are always talking about, but you rarely see in practice. So, we hope that you will approve it today. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. West? I see none, thank you.
Good morning, lady and gentleman. I'm Gene Roder. I'm a member of the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council. As Alan mentioned, our council actually voted to recommend that you approve this proposal. It was back in 2014, so I obviously can't speak for the entire council, but I did want to take a moment to share with you why I voted in favor of this. First is the issue of traffic, which is something that comes up before our council on almost every project, and Highway 267 is really the bane of the North Shore. But I was very glad to see that this is not a development proposal per se in terms of housing, and there's no substantial increase in parking. As Andrew mentioned, this really is focused on competing with Utah and Colorado and making a better experience for the people who are already at North Star, rather than making the traffic situation worse. The second, back in 2014, some of you will remember, water was a big issue back then, and so when the idea was proposed that there's going to be substantially more snowmaking, that was a big concern. And for me, I was very happy to understand that snowmaking is actually an excellent water retention practice, and so it really preserves the water rather than expends resources. Frankly, workforce housing is a very big issue for us on our council. This didn't come up back in 2014 because it wasn't as hot back then. So, many of the projects, as we've seen, have been frankly using the in-lu approach, which is good to an extent, but really doesn't address the underlying issue, and we're all going to have to struggle with that. So, I'm very, very happy to see that this is one that actually designates real housing for people rather than just money. And then, lastly, and probably most important, was the level of collaboration that we saw between North Star and the local environmental groups. When we see projects, we're always looking to see, well, what are the local environmental groups thinking about a project? So, to see the level of incorporation in the design and the planning from the very beginning, to me, was very important and helped convince me that this was a project to support. So, personally, as a North Star resident, I'm very excited about seeing these improvements come to North Star, and I ask that you approve this proposal as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this agenda item? Please come forward, and while we all know you, please identify yourself for the record.
Thank you. My name is Ron Triebus, and I'm here today to support what Sandy said and give a little bit different aspect to some of the history that's going on here. By the way, for all you guys up there, the sun is shining bright, the roads are dry, and I hope you're enjoying the same.
Now you're just being mean.
You're here, and I appreciate it. What I wanted to speak to was the fact that back in the 1995 period of time, when the TOT was originally raised, the purpose for doing that was to be able to allow North Lake Tahoe area to compete favorably with other destination resorts. And I believe that in having been able to follow this master plan process and be somewhat involved, this plan, as well as any of the other plans that have been going on, has done that. It is supporting the destination experience and enhancing that, so that people will come to North Lake Tahoe area and spend longer period of time and come back to that. The tourist development plan that the Board of Supervisors approved two years ago, the 1915 version of that, is loaded with goals and objectives that this plan has met many of, and I think more importantly, there is nothing in the North Star plan that is in conflict with that tourism development plan that you all have supported. So, we feel very comfortable with this plan, and we look forward to it continuing to enhance and help support the tourism development plan for North Lake Tahoe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this here in Auburn? Okay, seeing none, I will just briefly take it back to Tahoe City. Anyone in Tahoe City has the opportunity to weigh in on this one? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, close the public hearing, and bring it back to the Board. We're being asked to take five different actions here. Alan, did you have some closing comments before we bring this back to the Board for action?
Yeah, I just want to mention about the North Star Village Association comments. We did, staff did review the letter. We did have a sent provide comments, and actually, in your packet, attachment nine, it talks about the noise in the drop-off section there. So, our analysis did review what's in that letter, and there's discussion also about the design phase of the project. The applicant that I'm aware of, they are being neighborly, they're doing the knock-and-talk they have indicated to staff, they would be talking directly to them once they get, within that 20-year time period, talking to those neighbors to be part of that process, the fingerprints on that process, and bringing it back to staff. But staff, we have rules and regulations. We have noise that they have to meet, they can't exceed. You have setbacks, you have other requirements, and it is a ski area as well. But I do want to say, attachment nine, we have thoroughly addressed in writing for your packet as responses to those comments.
All right. Mr. Strain, was there anything you wanted to add additionally?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no further comments.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from any member of the Board? Okay, I see none. Jerry, did you want us to take this in five separate actions?
Yes.
That's what I thought, because you like to make our life very clear. All right. What is the pleasure of the Board? On one, we are being asked to adopt a resolution to certify the North Star Mountain Master Plan final environmental impact report and errata.
Motion for a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. On item 2A1, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we move to 2A2. We're being asked to adopt a resolution to amend the Mardis Valley Community Plan lined use diagram. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. 2A3, adopt an ordinance to rezone two existing forestry zone districts that comprise 1.33 and 0.68 acres in size and relocate within the same TPZ area. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? 2A4, we're being asked to adopt an ordinance to amend Placer County Code, Chapter 17, Article 17.04, Section 17.04.030, to amend the definition of ski lift facilities and ski runs.
And including the findings on page 15 of the staff report.
Including the findings on page 15. Thank you, Jerry. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Finally, 2A5, we're being asked to approve the conditional use permit to allow the North Star Mountain Master Plan.
And that includes the conditions of approval at attachment three and the findings on page 16 of the staff report?
Indeed, it does.
And our continued communication between the housing group and Vail to handle the lift J or?
The J-Lift, yeah.
The J-Lift, yeah.
Thank you. I was going to raise that issue under discussion. Any other thing under discussion?
Actually, on that, what do we mean in terms of, what are we talking about here?
I would propose that they just, you know, stay in communication with each other, meet in prefer. I don't think we're asking, you know, anybody to, you know, approve or disapprove anything, but just communicate about, you know, the implementation of the J-Lift.
So, we're talking about things like alignment, appropriate staging and all the rest, but not whether or not it proceeds?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
Any other discussion under that point? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All motions carry. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time here today. Enjoy your drive back home. I know I will. Okay, we're going to move to some department items now. We're going to start with Agenda Item Four. This is the Auditor's Department. We're being asked to approve recommendations relating to the Enterprise Resource Planning Project. Andy Sisk, auditor, presenting.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the Board, David and Jerry. Andy Sisk, County Auditor Controller. With me to my left, I have Jarrett Thiessen, Deputy Director of Information Technology. To his right, Jerry Gammas, Director of Administrative Services. To my immediate right, Steve Leckie from Leckie Consulting, the county's project manager. And then, to his right, Lori Walsh, Director of Human Resources. I thought I'd start today with a quote from the late Arthur Ashe. "Success is a journey, not a destination. The doing is often more important than the outcome." Next slide, Jerry. With that, this county and my office has been on a journey, and I've been taking the Board through this journey, and this journey is kind of summarized right here on these slides. This journey did start back in 2014, and I think really what this shows is that the county went through a very extensive procurement process. It also shows that we did our due diligence through this whole process. I would also tell you the journey doesn't end today, and hopefully, with your approval at the end of this presentation, we'll start the next chapter of that journey. This journey started with the executive sponsors from the Auditor Controller, CEO, Human Resources, and Administrative Services. We did a case study feasibility report. We identified and prioritized business objectives, and we aligned project goals against overall county goals. How are we going to accomplish this? We are going to accomplish a lot of this by using business process analysts, by going out to departments and figuring out where change needs to occur to make this system work. We also then engaged an RFP evaluation team that comprised subject matter experts from a number of departments, and one of the things you're going to see reinforced throughout this presentation is the collaboration we're seeking from other county departments. Specifically, this group was tasked with reviewing and evaluating proposed solutions, participating in vendor demonstrations, and recommending a proposed solution. And at this time, I want to thank those seven members that spent an inordinate amount of time sifting through every proposal, coming to every demo. There was four straight demos, eight hours a day, trying to digest everything. Donna Kirkpatrick from Sidro, Valerie Bain from Department of Public Works and Facilities, Jonathan Schmidt, County Executive Office, Judy Laporte, Assistant Director of HR, Lynn Yoshida, Managing Account and Auditor, Auditor Controller's Office, John Manning, buyer two from Procurement, and Jarrett Thiessen, Deputy Director of IT. Then we move now towards the implementation phase, and as you can see, we've formed a project implementation team. We'll get into a little more details there. It is again comprised of primarily the user departments, Auditor Controller, CEO, Human Resources, Information Technology, and Procurement Services. They'll be tasked with implementing the ERP system, monitoring implementation milestones, mitigating risks, monitoring costs, and measuring productivity and effectiveness. This group will also be working very closely with their integrator, Sierra Cedar, and more importantly, this group will also work with county departments, talking about the collaboration. We will be reaching out to departments and forming focus groups. Some of those focus groups have already started. The big task we need to accomplish first is the chart of accounts redesign. I could tell you, Mr. Leckie has already met with the key user departments about the chart of accounts, and then he's also reached out to the departments to figure out what their needs are in terms of setting up these chart of accounts, and that's just the beginning. We have also formed a new governance structure as part of this project. We think it's very important that there's check-ins throughout the process. We have the Executive Technology Steering Committee. All this was effective January 1 this year, and you can see the composition of the Executive Technology Steering Committee. They will be meeting monthly. They will be making decisions over big issues, approving all change orders over 250,000. They will be apprised of any slippage to the go-live dates, and they will also be tasked with making business process policy decisions where consensus is not reached. The Leadership Committee is who Mr. Leckie will be reporting to on a biweekly basis. He'll be reporting to them. They will be responsible for all decision-making where the project team can't readily make it. Critical deliverables will be reviewed and approved by this committee. All payments to the integrator, Sierra Cedar, will be approved by them, and they will report to the Executive Technology Steering Committee. Jarrett Thiessen is actually the chair of that committee and will come to every Executive Technology Steering Committee with a briefing, along with Mr. Leckie. On the next page, you can kind of see the org chart for the ERP replacement project team. I know in your packet, you noted there are 17 people that will be on this project. All 17 are there. You can see the project team reports to the project manager. The project manager also has a project manager from Sierra Cedar that reports to him as well, so we really have two project managers. And then you can see how the project manager then will report to the Leadership Committee, up to the Executive Technology Steering Committee, and then eventually to the Board of Supervisors, where we will provide at least one or two updates a year on how the project is commencing and moving along. Which takes us to Workday and what this application brings to the team. As you can see, just by looking at this visual, it brings a lot to the table. A couple of things I wanted to emphasize here is the technology foundation. It's a single code line, and what that means is you can't customize the system. So, that means every Workday customer uses the same product. I think they're currently on Workday 27 or 28. Whatever we're using is what another county is using, is what another private sector company like Google may be using, who's one of their clients, so everybody is on the same version. Workday was founded in 2005 by Dave Duffield, and I don't know if that name rings a bell with anybody, but Dave Duffield was the founder of PeopleSoft. And he founded PeopleSoft, and as many of us recall, there was a hostile takeover in 2004 by Oracle that took over PeopleSoft. And so, Dave and his chief developer, Anil Bhusri, decided to form a new company, and actually, they decided to form that new company in Truckee, California. They sat down, had coffee, and decided they wanted to sell a cloud-based solution for finance and HR. They are considered software visionaries in the sector. And with that, I want to turn it over to Jarrett to talk a little bit about the cloud technology.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Jarrett Thiessen, Deputy Director of IT, and as Andy alluded to, I'm here to talk to you about the technology behind the proposed solution. This particular solution that we're proposing is a software-as-a-service type of cloud. That means the vendor hosts everything from the storage, to the servers, to the operating system, to the application, and from the application on, that's where our team comes into play. We configure the software. We don't customize the software in this case. As Andy stated, all of Workday's customers are on one and a code, so everybody's on the same version. If there's an issue, everybody's experiencing it, gets resolved very quickly that way. We evaluated, you know, several of these products. The number-one concern for me coming into a cloud service is security. The Workday solution does have the security credentials that we were looking for, a couple of different ISO certifications that make sure that they adhere to certain security standards for both cloud and their data centers. But we had a team of subject managers from many different departments evaluate the proposals, and this one did meet our needs. It comes with a single sign-on, which means it integrates with our directory services for our network accounts. It also has encryption, so data is, from their different customers, are separated logically using encryption. They have event monitoring, and will notify us if there's, you know, any issues with our data, and those event logs can be provided to us throughout the day, so it can integrate with our security incident management system as well. And lastly, on security, it does enforce role-based security, so that we can configure the system to allow access to certain functions for some folks and limit that functionality for other folks as we see fit. What this slide is showing you is kind of a consolidated What this slide is showing you is kind of a consolidation of our services. So in today's world, we have a data center disaster recovery site. We've got staff that are allocated for operational and maintenance-type of services on our servers and applications. And then every so often, we have to go through this software maintenance cycle where we have to upgrade our systems, and that can be costly and time-consuming for our staff. So what we're seeing here in this slide is all of that is becoming consolidated into a cloud. And the responsibility of all those functions are now shifted from our staff over to the Our staff will then no longer be responsible for the day-to-day operational functions of server maintenance and things like that, but they can focus on more of the strategic initiatives and helping our departments better utilize the technology and working on those business processes. Cost is another change in this model. We no longer have large capital expenditures, both for software licensing and hardware. Every three or four years nowadays, we have to replace hardware, so that capital expenditure goes away and becomes the responsibility of the vendor. And software maintenance agreements also go away. So we've shifted from that focus over to a subscription base, where all of that is included, and we pay for the number of licenses that we need to access the system. And we only pay for what we use in that case. And lastly, just consolidation. So we've got, today, we've got two systems, one for our financial system and one for our HR and payroll system. But there's also several ancillary systems that support both of those systems, and all of that now is going to get pulled into one system. When I started with the county, I started asking, hey, what are the challenges around these systems? And the biggest challenge was, hey, I've got data in this system, I've got data in this system, and I need to create a report, and I'm having trouble getting that data out. So having one consolidated system and one reporting function out of that system is going to be a tremendous help to our departments. That's it for the technology overview. Does anybody have any questions before I turn it back over?
Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, I see a lot of information on money going out. What's the savings? It sounds like we've got savings in staff time as well as other types of expenditures, updating the system, and those kinds of things. Can you kind of quantify that real quickly?
That's coming in the next couple of slides.
All right.
Good question.
All right, I'll turn it back over.
Then I will take, yeah, we'll start talking money. So first, on this slide here, we've got a funding plan overview for the ERP project. On the left side is the project cost, and the right side is the project funding sources. Today, you're being asked to approve the Workday hosting licensing contract for 4.3 million and the Sierra Cedar Implementation Services contract. The board has already approved the Leckie Consulting contract. And then also in your packet, we're asking you to approve the funding, the project plan, the project team basically, and some backfills for some of those key positions that'll be on the project to the tune of 2.9 million. The funding source is pretty straightforward, using reserves and charges to our users. And it's a delicate balancing act, because we want to make sure that we're not charging our users too much. At the same time, we're not using too much in reserves, so trying to balance those out. And we will be coming back to the board and, again, updating you as we move through the final budget process if any of these numbers were to so change. But right now, this is the plan that we're going with. Next slide, Jerry. So return on investment. So as you can see, going down the left-hand side review, we've got the SaaS versus on-premise solutions, technical versus business-oriented resources, the pace of innovation, security, facility requirements. You know, all of these are going to translate into true cost savings, which are on the far right-hand side, where you see the estimated ROI. That's the amount of costs we're going to save over 10 years in terms of some of the stuff that Jarrett was talking about. When we start talking about things like cost avoidance, really what cost avoidance means is that's the cost of a business process decreasing, but net costs stay flat. And really what happens is that eventually, this will transition into cost savings in the future. What will happen is we go through the process, either certain positions in the county, depending on where business processes are changing, will be repurposed or redeployed to another business process, or there will be certain positions that will just fall out through attrition. And I can use my office as an example, always like to use my office as an example. I've got two technical staff. One of them is retiring next year, I already know that, and the other one's two years from retiring. So what I know is I needed a backfill real quickly to kind of start learning what we're currently maintaining in our office. But I know that I'm going to be in a state of transition once this project is even going. And so how am I going to fill those positions in the future? I'm not sure yet. Part of it might be part of a post-support model, which I'm going to talk about here in a minute. But that's the type of stuff I'm talking about in terms of, you're going to see those cost savings in the future, and I would argue we're going to become more efficient. If a recession does hit us, it's going to make retrenchment much easier for us. Also going to automate, we're going to automate many administrative tasks. And that will then free up staff time to focus on other, more important tasks like data analysis. This is something I think that's been lacking, and we really want to do more analysis, especially with the robust reporting that we're going to be getting out of the system. The post-implementation support team, I know this is something I've talked to the board about, especially I highlighted it on September 27 when I made the last presentation. It's definitely going to be a dedicated team, and that's the key word there, is a dedicated team, that's responsible for performing acceptance testing of future upgrades and enhancements. There will be two mandatory updates per year. As I mentioned, every customer's on the same version. We do have some time to make those changes and get them in the system. And then also the thing that's neat with Workday is the county can help drive the vendor's roadmap. As I was doing reference checking on Workday, one of the counties up in Washington is already creating a CAFR reporting product, which other counties and cities will probably be able to utilize in the future. That's the type of sharing that we're seeing with this company. The cost of the post-implementation support team, I think it's in the packet, we're saying it's about $895,000 a year, but let's just say it's $1 million to round it off. I think $1 million is a great amount of money to spend to perform maintenance of a critical county asset. It's just good business. So in summary, last slide, we are kicking off the project. March 2017 is when we hope to have the integrators on-site. The project team is hopefully going to start tomorrow afternoon. We plan to kick off the HR payroll side of the project in September 2017. The go-live for the financial system, July 1, 2018, at the start of a fiscal year. And then the payroll, January 1, 2019. And so all this does tie into some of what we're doing here as a county. When you think about the employee engagement initiative, and you think about a product that will give us a nice transition to priority-based budgeting, Workday does that for us. This also ties into our ever-changing workforce. We've got retiring baby boomers, and we've got millennials that are being hired. This is a quote from the CFO, who gave this to me on the day they went live with HR at the City and County of Denver. "New hires expect new technology, and we believe Workday gives us a recruiting edge." And I can't dream these things up, and I don't know the editor of the Journal of Accountancy, but I just got my journal, and it says, "I love my job." And it says, "More firms deploying flexible arrangements upgraded technology to retain employees." So if we want to keep pace with the companies of the world, we need to move forward with this endeavor. I'll end it with one more quote, and I'm going to bring it home with a baseball quote from the Iron Man of baseball. "When you're in the day-to-day grind, it just seems like it's another step along the way. But I find joy in the actual process, the journey, the work. It's not the end. It's not the end event." Cal Ripken Jr. With that, I'm hoping the board will approve Items 1 through 8. I won't list them all out. We're here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions? Jack?
No, not a question, just an observation. I want to thank you, Andy, for bringing this forward. Not just bringing it forward, but I think the way that it was done and the teams that you put together to vet this product, you know, number one, it makes it a very transparent endeavor. And number two, I think in order to do something and switch from what we've been doing in the past to something that we want to do in the future, it takes buy-in from everybody. Everybody's got to be on the bus somewhat. So when I see things like this, it smells better, to say the least, as far as being able to justify this expense. And I think the savings over 10 years, it's pretty impressive, and I hope that we do get there. But the fact that we're elevating our game is what's important. But I'm hopeful that you can use that team that you put together to vet pretty much everything else that we do around here, so we can all get to that comfort level in the process of acquiring different technologies and newer technologies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kirk?
Yeah, a couple of questions that are more perhaps CEO-related in regard to the project funding sources. We've identified various charges to departments over the five subsequent fiscal years. First of all, have these charges to departments been reviewed with the various departments compared against what they're currently paying for services being received, be it through technology, or through accounting, or through HR, wherever? And we're not all of a sudden going to have, in our next budget cycle, have a bunch of department heads standing there saying, "I've got all these additional costs, and I can't afford to man the front desk."
The departmental charges for fiscal '17, the department heads are aware of those charges. It would be the charges for fiscal '18, '19 going forward that have not yet been vetted with department heads.
And let me clarify that also. The charges that are denoted on the funding plan for '18, '19 going forward are actually, if you look at the funding plan itself, the current department charges annually for the two systems, the PAST system and the Acorn system, are about $2.4 million a year that we charge through our charges at IT. So the 2.6 is actually, you're looking at about $200,000 increase overall to all departments in the charges. And again, and that includes the contingency that we have requested. If the contingency is not utilized, then those charges would drop. But we were being...
At what point do we go from duplicate systems operating to being fully operational to where now you no longer have the two existing system costs? I mean, we're going to be bearing the duplicate of costs for some period of time.
Great point, and that is accurate. So during the first two and a half years, year one and year two is when you're seeing the concurrent systems, the legacy systems up and running, the charges still continuing. So at go-live in July of 2018, one will drop off, and then in go-live in 2019, the other will drop off. So it almost lines exactly with those charges being transitioned from the department charges that they're currently seeing now into the project costs.
Okay. And of course, many of our departments operate on a reimbursable basis from other fund sources, state, federal funds. All of these costs that we've historically had approved as reimbursable costs that we're now transferring into this system, these are all going to continue to be reimbursable costs?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
So nobody's going to question our technology decision externally that would then put us in a position where we didn't get this approved through external means, and now we have to bear the cost that we're expecting reimbursement?
We will be able to get reimbursed from those same funding sources that like HHS is typically used to getting reimbursed from.
Right. The HHS, Child Support Services, they all operate on that premise. And so we're covered. Nobody's in the future going to say, well, no, wait a minute, we didn't review that vendor and that particular technology, so we're good. Okay. So in theory, we have savings over time.
Correct.
And we are being asked to draw down our infrastructure reserve fund to the tune of $5 million. Is there any discussion within CEO's office or anywhere else about savings over time being used to replenish that infrastructure reserve fund as a number-one priority, or what we intend to do with those savings over time?
Well, there have been discussions about that through the budget team. And what we wanted to do was put a plan together that we can bring forward to get us to that acquisition phase. And in year 2019, 2020, that doesn't sound, sounds right, is actually during the budget process, when we will be bringing those types of recommendations back to your board as to what we would like to do, what your board chooses to do with those savings. Currently, our financial system, we've had for 20 years. So obviously, we've been very conservative with just a 10-year plan. We don't really anticipate going back and redoing this in 10 years, so absolutely...
And I'm a huge fan of this model. The software-as-a-service model is the way to go. I'm a big fan.
So the short answers, we'll bring them back to your board.
My question, less a concern, more of a question, is making sure that we plan for it, is if we are anticipating savings over time specifically with the opportunity to then repay some of our reserve funds for infrastructure, I would just hate to see those savings get absorbed into other operational areas of the departments if we've truly identified. And the technology should, as you've identified. The duplication that we go through right now, trying to get the two systems to work together, the data entry duplication, all the rest, that obviously goes away. Tremendous opportunities for efficiency, that's great. Let's just make sure that we pay attention to the opportunity to realize the savings, capture them, and then the board has the opportunity to say what we want to do with those dollars. That was all.
Okay, thank you. Pardon me.
Thank you. I had some similar questions to Kirk, but he has asked most of them. My one question is, we do manage and process payroll for a number of special districts. Are there going to be any implications for the special districts? And for anyone in Tahoe, it's raining really hard down here now, so Ron lied about sunshine and clear roads. Are there going to be any implications for the special districts for whom we do process payroll?
Yeah, there will be many implications for the special districts, not only on the payroll side, but also on the accounting side, where we're going to have to work very closely with Sierra College and Plastra County Office of Education. But definitely for the special districts that we process payroll, I will probably bring them into my office to, again, explain this transition that we're moving towards and where we're going. And hopefully, it should be really seamless to them, and hopefully, they won't know any better. I consider us to be like an ADP. And an ADP probably would reach out to everybody like I'm going to and really tell them, this is how we're going to accomplish this, and this is how we're going to meet your needs.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, any questions from the public on this item?
All right, seen none. I'm going to bring this back to the board. Most of these, Jerry, I think are voice votes, with the exception of the budget revision, which will be a roll call. Is that correct? Okay. We're being asked to approve the award of a master services agreement with Workday of Pleasanton, California, for subscription licensing, training, and related services in an amount not to exceed $4,719,282 for the term of March 1, 2017 to February 28, 2022, funded by County Wide Systems Fund. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, that sounded unanimous. Number two, we're being asked to approve the award of a master services agreement with Sierra Cedar of Alpharetta, Georgia, for professional services to support the implementation of the new Enterprise Resource Planning System in an amount not to exceed $4,950,204 for the same aforementioned term, I'm sorry, March 1, 2017 to February 28, 2019. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. We're being asked to approve the proposed Enterprise Resource Planning Project Funding Plan.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. We're being asked to approve a budget revision in the amount of $8,263,554 from the Infrastructure Reserve Fund, $5,157,801. The Automation Reserve Fund, $622,37. And the Capital Projects Fund, $2,483,716. This is a roll call.
Duran?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Montgomery?
Yes. We're being asked to approve the addition of the appropriate components to the master fixed asset list.
The approval is...
All those in favor? Aye. We're being asked to approve the proposed Enterprise Resource Planning Project Staffing Plan.
The approval is...
All those in favor? Aye. We're being asked to authorize the Auditor Controller to execute change orders for the project up to a 10% contingency amount of $1,722,833. Okay, that is 12%. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. And last, but not least, we are being asked to authorize the Auditor Controller to sign all required documents subject to the review and approval of County Council and Risk Management, and to take the appropriate action necessary to fully implement the project.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you. It sounds like we have a project. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your hard work and looking forward to seeing some great changes in the future.
Yeah, just a couple more thank yous, because I couldn't do this alone. Special thanks to Brett Wood at procurement. Did a fabulous job leading this. We had a consultant that came in, next level, that provided support to Brett's shop. Steve Lecky from Lecky Consulting's been instrumental throughout this whole process. The executive sponsors, Jerry Gamiz, Lori Walsh, David Bosch. Special thanks to our former assistant CEO, Andy Heath. Just been very supportive about the whole process from A to Z. And last, to my staff, because I couldn't do anything without my staff. Thank you again.
Thank you all. All right. We will now move to another department item, five, Public Works and Facilities. This is the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project Parking and Landscaping Plans and Specifications. Peter Kratz presenting. Welcome.
Greetings, Madam Chair and members of the board. Yes, Peter Kratz, Assistant Director with Public Works and Facilities. With this item, the department asks for your board to approve the plans and specifications for parking and landscaping improvements for the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. Estimated cost, $800,000 to construct, and authorize the Director of Public Works and Facilities to advertise for construction bids. As a quick refresher, the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project began back in 2014, and this phase of work will represent the final contract for constructing all planned improvements in downtown Kings Beach, including water quality, transportation, and streetscape elements. This final phase is centered around the West End Surface Parking Lot that will accommodate 29 vehicles located just southwest of the intersection of Deer Street and Rainbow Avenue. It will represent the sixth public parking facility built for the project, and with all six lots, there will be a total of 146 public parking spaces dispersed throughout the community. The remainder of work under this effort consists of landscaping, installation of a pedestrian railing across Grift Creek, and some other miscellaneous items across the project site. This final phase of the project has all needed permits and environmental clearance and is scheduled for construction this summer. And finally, this phase of the project will be funded with a combination of state transportation and county transient occupancy tax revenues. So with that, I would ask your board to approve this item respectfully and stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions from any member of the board? I see none. Any questions from anyone in the audience here in Auburn or in Tahoe City? I see none. What's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed tensions? Right. Thank you very much, Peter.
Thank you very much.
We're now going to move to item 5B, purchase of dial-a-ride transit buses from Creative Bus Sales of Chino, California.
Thank you. Will Garner, Placer County Department of Public Works and Facilities. And yes, we are here to recommend a purchase of seven dial-a-ride buses today. These are all smaller buses. And they are used for our dial-a-ride service here in western Placer County. These seven buses will replace seven older buses, including two that we inherited from the city of Lincoln that desperately need replacing. And so that will help that operation as well. And that will be funded by the city of Lincoln. The purchase is from a joint statewide purchase for buses that we'll be able to participate in without having to do our own competitive procurement. And that is, again, going to be awarded to, if you approve, to Creative Bus Sales of Chino, California. The funding is 95% grant-funded, including grant funds from the city of Lincoln, passed through from the city of Lincoln to us. And the 5% that isn't grant-funded is from our local transportation fund, which is funds that are designated for transit purposes and are in reserves right now. So with that, the recommendation is to approve the award of a negotiated purchase order to Creative Bus Sales of Chino, California, for the purchase of seven new cutaway transit buses in the total amount of $558,796.
Any questions from the board on this? Well, I do have one question. What is going to happen? Two of them obviously sound like they just need to be fully retired.
Yeah.
What's going to happen with the other five buses?
That's a good question. So we will, once we get the buses delivered, we'll assess the health of those existing buses. We're actually going to send one more up to Tahoe. We did that with our last purchase. And because we're sort of transitioning how we're handling ADA transit services up there with the sort of reduction of available taxi vendors that we have used in the past. So right now, we're actually doing it with our own drivers. We're in a transition period with that. So we're going to put another one up there for that purpose. And then we may keep another one or two around because from time to time, we have to use them on our fixed route system if we need backups or our dial-a-ride vendor has to use their own bus. We'd rather have our own branded buses, even though they're older-looking buses out there, rather than having a nondescript white bus out there in Rockland or someplace.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any member of the audience have any comments or questions on this? Anyone in Tahoe? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Will. We're now going to move to item 5C. We're being given a Cabin Creek biomass facility update on our biomass-to-energy facility. Welcome.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. Brett Story from the Environmental Engineering Department. Want to give you an update and look for some direction from you all, which is to, at the last meeting in October, I briefed your board that because of the low energy market, we were no longer cost competitive and asked for some direction to go seek out what could make it more competitive. We have done so. Your staff has looked at, there are some, if we were to move to public financing, we believe, and we've run some financial modeling with our developer, that we would be at a market level that would be close to such renewables as solar and wind. So I'm here today to provide you the update of how we're going to attack this problem and provide a solution to you, again, if it's your direction to do so. With the added tree mortality issue as now a part of this, as you know, we have trees dying all over the place, and we are finding some markets for them, but there will be other markets that we may not be able to take them to. This facility could provide for that. But it also has an influence on our operations at the ERL and other places, how we put this material in other places. So that's going to be one of the analysis. But essentially, we're coming back to you with, there are five analyses that we believe need to be performed. And the reason we need five different analyses, two are with our project developer and one our building designer. We need to provide a little more detailed engineering analysis so that when we apply for public financing, we will have the ability to show that it's a much less, much lower risk in them providing us the money to build this facility. So we need to, we need to do a study looking at the detailed design, engineering, construction estimates, and update the financial modeling. We need also to take the 40% building design to a 60% design. And then we also need to look at our operations in the eastern regional landfill from an internal basis, how much of that material will need to be moved to other markets potentially. We're also going to be looking at, we have, as you know, a Placer County Solid Waste Fund, so we're going to be looking at the nexus of the dollars in that fund as to what could be utilized potentially to help fund this facility. So we'll bring you back a report of that. And then finally, we're going to perform a full review of all potential public financing options. We've done some initial looks. There are some federal programs, there are some state programs, and there are some local ability to raise funding, one of which I mentioned, which is your own board controls the solid waste fund. In order to do this, the internal certainly is already covered by our budgets. The external will cost on the order of $135,000. We have, as you're aware, a Department of Energy biomass grant that we still have approximately $1.5 million remaining on. At this point in the process, everything we utilize for that, we have to provide a 50% match, is what they call it. It's really a 110% match when you get to the formula within their file. And so what we've put together is, we would take $67,500 from the DOE grant, and then we'd need to come up with $70,000 of our own. And we have, right now, a little bit of money in SEDRA that's left over from some funds that we had working towards this project, and then we are locating the rest of the money. If that is what this board is interested in staff to do, we could have all of that work done, I hope, in less than six months, but we're providing six months to do that. At that point in time, we would then be able to come back to you for a resolution to apply for some of those loans, or, as the case may be, a simple contract for those loans. It really depends on how we move forward. And so with that, if we were able to get funding, I've had some discussions with the energy provider in that area and shown that we believe we can come down about 30%. They are now interested again in that. There are also some other factors out there now. There are some community choice aggregations in the state, and I think you're aware, our county is looking to prepare one of those. That could be a possible purchaser of the power. But we would be in an ideal position to then compete with those renewable energies that we've had such a hard time getting down to with this public financing. With that, if the direction is that we proceed with that, we could come back within a couple of board meetings with contracts for those first two that I talked about from the outside sources, and then we have a plan ready for the internal to move forward with all of that analysis. And of course, we would come back for your signature and approval of those and the budget amendment to do so. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Brett. Any questions from any member of the board? I see none. Any questions or comments from any member of the public, either here in Auburn or in Tahoe on this agenda item? I see none. I would say that it appears the board would like you to move forward with these five steps.
Great, thank you. We'll be back shortly with the answers.
We'll see you later. Okay. We are now going to move to agenda item six. This is the Sheriff's Department item, Submission of Criminal Justice Facilities Construction Financing Program Proposal. That is a tongue twister. Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Montgomery, members of the board, Mr. Bosch, Mr. Card, Mark Giacami of the Placer County Sheriff's Office. I'm joined by Lieutenant Carol Walsh and Lieutenant Andrew Scott from our Corrections Division. We are here this morning requesting your authorization to adopt a resolution authorizing the Sheriff's Office to submit a Criminal Justice Facility Construction Financing Program Proposal to the Port State of Community and Corrections 2017 Jail Construction Financing Program under the heading of Senate Bill 844. The amount will be $30 million to provide funding to assist with the construction of a 120-bed medium-security facility and associated educational, vocational, behavioral, and life skills training space down in South Placer. Provide a little bit of context behind this request. Excuse me, in August of 2015, we were before your board requesting similar funding under SB 863, $40 million for the construction of a 168-bed facility. From that award, we ended up getting a partial award of $9.5 million. We did a scope reduction, and we got a $950,000 match from the county, and we're in the process of developing plans to build a 45-bed mental health facility at South Placer. This funding would allow us to continue that original plan with the construction of 120 beds. I will now turn it over to Lieutenant Walsh, who has more specifics around the facility.
Need to, there you go, Carol.
I'd like to discuss the background with Senate Bill 863 and Senate Bill 844. Governor Brown with AB 109 realized the impacts to county jails with extended incarceration terms and sophistication of inmate population. Governor Brown has provided counties with an opportunity through a competitive process with SB 863 and SB 844 to provide for additional housing, infrastructure, and associated classroom, vocational, and life skills treatment space to assist in mitigating the impacts of long-term incarceration and providing a roadmap to inmate successes through evidence-based educational programs. Additionally, South Placer Jail was specifically designed for efficiencies but not initially designed for long-term incarceration. However, it was designed for expansion. South Placer was not designed to provide vocational in-depth treatment services. With this funding from SB 863 and SB 844, we have an opportunity to build a facility specifically designed to address expansion. Now that we have inmates for extended periods of time, we have an opportunity to utilize state funds and build a facility that provides spaces for meaningful education, treatment programs, and vocational training. And with that, as far as financing, I'm going to turn that back over to Mark Giacami to talk about funding.
So the financing for this program is the lease revenue bond financing that we were in front of your board back in 2015. The way the program works is the county essentially fronts the money in the beginning to start the construction, and then on a monthly basis, we're refunded from the state. The county share for this program, should we get the $30 million, would be a $3 million match. But essentially, in the end, that's all we would spend is the $3 million, is the money would be refunded to us through the life of the project. So if there are any more questions relative to that, it's the same financing that we had come forward for in 2015. But we have, we do have members in the audience from Facility Services and also the DLR group, if you have any specific questions about the facility or what we're going to be, where the facility is going to be located down in South Placer.
Kirk?
Yeah, we have, as you know, five-year budget forecasting that we've been implementing now, where we're looking at our operating costs now on a longer-term basis. I'm curious, do any of our five-year forecasts, as we look at the Public Safety Fund, anticipate this kind of facility coming online? Because I know, particularly in the Public Safety Fund, we're looking at some operational deficits as things stand right now. So we bring this facility online, what does that do to that picture?
So relative to operational costs with this new facility, the long-term plan for the Sheriff's Office is to remain bed and staff neutral and while experiencing operational efficiencies. So we currently have 912 jail beds, with 492 of those in Auburn and 420 in South Placer. With the transition, the latest transition down to South Placer, we did add staffing across the board in corrections, to be quite honest. And we have now transitioned down to fill the 420 beds in South Placer. We've got plans underway right now to retrofit Housing Unit 3 in Auburn, which will convert that from traditional beds, if we will, to program specific beds, reducing our number to a total of 836 beds in the system. When we build the 45-bed facility in South Placer, the intent at this point would be to transfer 45 beds from Auburn to South Placer, remaining at 836 beds and staff-neutral. That's the same plan with these 120 beds. Once they're constructed in South Placer, the intent, and keeping in mind, this is six to eight years down the line, we have no idea if there's another AB 109 or Prop 47 on the horizon. So the intent now would be to transition 120 beds from Auburn to South Placer, remaining at 136 beds, and again, staff-neutral, and hopefully more operational-efficient as we transfer most of our beds down to South Placer.
So at that point, Auburn would, in theory, be essentially decommissioned?
Not decommissioned. We would have, that would leave us with 251 beds in Auburn. But a total of 836 in the system.
But let me just be clear that each year that we update our five-year financial forecast, we incorporate any changes in staffing levels in the Sheriff's Office to reflect that and then run that out over the total duration of the plan. So you're seeing updated information every time.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Duran?
Yeah. You know, when we met, I had the same concerns that Kirk just pointed out right now. But in viewing the Criminal Justice Master Plan and the type of beds that we need to address this type of population using those new evidence-based practices, you know, that I understand better and feel more comfortable moving in this direction for, you know, these additional beds. And that's because the way that you've explained your intent specifically being that it's going to be neutral with regards to staffing and operations. And I think that's helpful because I think we all believe that, you know, while DEWIT has a purpose, that that purpose is going to be winding down as we go ahead and transition down to South Placer, so.
Any other comments from any member of the board?
I'm sure.
Supervisor Holmes?
I just want to say how pleased I am that we're able to provide 45 beds for the mentally ill in our jails. That is a critical component for episodic recidivism, and hopefully, that those people that qualify for those beds will get the kind of treatment that gets them back to a place where they can survive in society without those issues coming back to them. So I'm very pleased about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Let me echo all the comments that have been made so far. I think in light of AB 109 and Props 49 and, I believe, 59 or recently, we are just going to have to engage more intelligently in this process to get the outcomes that we all really recognize we want to get to, which is reduced recidivism, dealing with issues around mental health, and frankly, the concerns of many in North Auburn around the jail up there and how those operations are going to change over time. So I want to thank you all for bringing this forward and doing the work on this. I'll open it up to the public, if there's any member of the public who would like to comment on this. I see we have Mr. Hutchinson here. Did you have any comments that you wanted to make on this? Since this really is in your... your bailiwick?
Thank you, Honorable members of the board. Captain Don Hutchinson with the Placeta County Sheriff's Office. I am the jail commander. And really, I just am happy that we're bringing it forward and proud of my staff did a great job in doing this preparation. And I think we're headed in the right direction with AB 109. As you know, it's really kind of left us in a hole and scrambling to get the right beds for the right people and the right programs to move ahead. And so as we do that, this is going to be a major part of that, and I appreciate your support and help in doing this.
Thank you. Any member of the audience have any comments or questions on this? Anyone in Tahoe, any comments or questions on this agenda item? Bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We do have two more department items. We have a supplemental agenda item from the Treasure Tax Collector's Office, and then we have the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association item. But we also have a lot of firepower in this room, pun intended. And so I actually would like to move to our eleven-thirty timed item, if we are ready for that. Anyone have any objections to that?
No.
Okay, there's no objections to that? I'm going to use my great authority to do that then. All right, we're moving to our eleven-thirty timed item. This is Agenda Item Three on our agenda. This is Board of Supervisors, a series of items. We are going to begin with a commendation and recognition of Carol Brodeur. Carol, would you mind coming forward?
I moved.
There you are, I've lost you, yes. Thank you. We want to put you right there so that we can address you directly and then address some comments to you. But I am going to kick this off, first, I'm going to kick this off by saying I had the great opportunity to share a meal last night with Carol, and she is everything I've ever heard about her, which is smart, funny, delightful, intelligent. She was just great. I'm so bummed that I've been here for over eight years, and it was the first time we ever sat down and had a meal together. So thank you for sharing.
Thank you, it was fun.
Yeah, I had a really great time, and I hope you enjoy your little holiday that's coming up. So I will begin by reading this commendation, and then I'll come down and we'll take some photos, and then we'll open it up for comments from the board. "In the matter of a commendation recognizing Carol Brodeur for thirty years of dedicated public service as an employee of the Placer County Sheriff's Office, whereas Carol is retiring from the County of Placer Office of the Sheriff after serving that agency and the citizens of this county for thirty years. Whereas Carol began her employment as a typist clerk too, serving as a valued member of the Sheriff's Investigations Unit, where she received accolades for taking a true proprietary interest in her work and her coworkers and looking out for the best interests of the organization and its members. Carol later was selected as the undersheriff's administrative secretary, where she continued to demonstrate exceptional skills. Undersheriff Stephen Darcy relied on her positive attitude, technical, and problem-solving skills. And whereas Carol was selected by Sheriff Edward N. Bonner as his executive secretary, where she received an outstanding rating on her performance evaluations for her many strengths, to include her warm and welcoming demeanor, tremendous organizational knowledge, her integrity and openness, and her consummate professionalism. And whereas Carol was nominated by Sheriff Bonner and selected for the California State Sheriff's Association 2014 Administrative Assistant of the Year, in part for her polite and caring manner, making her the perfect contact voice for the Office of the Sheriff. Her dedication to the Office of the Sheriff and to the citizens of the community has been exemplary. Now therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held February 21, 2017, and acknowledge with great appreciation the exceptional service of Carol, and we wish her well in her retirement and future pursuits." Congratulations, Carol.
Thank you.
So we will start with a few photos. Sheriff Bonner, are you joining us in this photo? I believe you are.
Let's see, I have. These are mine, that's Carol. We're giving marks.
And I was told to come up here.
Okay, excellent. I want to hand that to you for you to hold.
Where do we look?
I think you have.
And we'll give one to Gus, too.
Hi, Gus.
Thanks, Gus. Congratulations.
Are we good on that? Okay, congratulations, Carol.
Thank you.
Would you make some comments?
No, thank you.
No comments? Okay.
I'm curious, I don't know.
She has very damp hands. I think she's a little nervous. But I do believe that some members of our board wanted to make some comments to you, so.
Well, I'll start. I just want to say that since it was widely known and pretty much universally accepted that you were the reason the office ran so well. Devin, you're screwed. Yeah, that's all there is to it. You're coming in, the vacuum is, thank you so much for.
And the heavens opened.
Yes, exactly. Thank you for your service.
Any other comments from any member of the board?
Yeah, I'll just echo that and go a little bit farther to say, without you, Carol, Ed would be nothing.
Oh, man. Jerry. Oh, Jerry hit his light by accident. He's very quiet.
He doesn't want to say anything.
Supervisor Holmes?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's been a great thirty years.
Carol, we will miss you. Thank you so much for all your work, and I have to echo their comments, Ed's nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have a really exciting and official thing coming up here. We will be witnessing the administration of the oath of office of incoming Sheriff Devon Bell, and I believe our outgoing sheriff is going to be administering said oath of office. Please come forward.
I believe that's true.
All right, you're there.
I'm here. Terry?
Yeah.
Where's Terry?
Yeah.
We good? Uh, who? Oh, okay. We, turn this way or that way, Terry?
No, face each other. It's like a wedding. Oh.
Slightly angry. Slightly angry. All right, all right. All right, here we go. Ah, should I raise my hand?
Yeah.
Yeah, raise your hand.
Right there.
I haven't done this before. And repeat after me. I state your name. I, Devon Bell. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. Foreign and domestic. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance. The Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well. And that I will well. And faithfully discharge the duties. And faithfully discharge the duties. Upon which I am about to enter. Upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations. Maybe a little bit. I, first, I want to thank the board for your vote of confidence and affirmation in continuing the continuity of the Sheriff's Office. I appreciate your support. I have to say thank you to the men and women of the Placeta County Sheriff's Office. They are some of the finest individuals that have been my privilege to work with in my entire life. Thank you to the community. We work very hard to have a good relationship with our community. We recognize that policing is something that we do with our community and not to it, and that implies we have a relationship with them. And lastly, I have to thank Sheriff Ed Bonner. He is the finest sheriff in the state of California. I've learned more from him in the last ten years than I did the previous fifteen as a deputy, progressing up through the ranks. When you talk about grace, dignity, courtesy, respect, integrity, and professionalism, he is the epitome of those. And I said this once before, I will not disappoint you. Thank you.
And I'm not sure who I'm supposed to call sheriff now, so I'm just going to, I think, call both of you. Devon's like him, still. I do want to make sure that you note the actual passing of the baton up there on this slide. That was a lovely touch that I think Terry organized, so she's looking embarrassed now. But, yes, did you, would you like to say something? No, okay, fine. In that case, we will move to our third item under Item Three, Three C. This is a commendation and a recognition of Sheriff Edward Bonner. And we're being asked to approve the commendation recognizing Sheriff Edward Bonner for forty-three years of exemplary leadership and dedicated service to Placer County, and I believe Supervisor Wiegand is going to be handling this one.
Thank you. My pleasure, and I'm going to read this, Ed, and as usual, then I'm going to bring it down, and in that you're leaving me, I might hit you over the head with it, I'm not sure. But one thing I want, it says in the matter of.
Make me stand up here first.
Yeah, could you do that? Thank you.
Robert.
It does say recognizing Edward Bonner, but in that you and I have known each other since we were fourteen, is it okay if I just call you Ed as I read through this?
Eddie? That's how they really know how long we go back, Robert.
Whereas the career of Ed Bonner began as Placer County Deputy Sheriff on February 11, 1974, when we were twenty-two years old, me being the older. During his career, he rose through the ranks, attaining sergeant in '79, acting lieutenant '84, captain '85, Placer County undersheriff in 1992. Ed Bonner ran and was elected for Placer County Sheriff in 1994. Shame, I ran for Placer County Supervisor. This was the first of his six uncontested elections. Sheriff, he nobly served and protected the citizens of Placer County for twenty-two years before handing off the baton to undersheriff Devon Bell in 2017. Whereas over his distinguished forty-three-year career, Sheriff Bonner furthered his education through completion of extensive management and training courses, including post-command college, jail management, internal affairs, advanced police management, FBI Academy, post-management school, National Sheriff's Institute, post-executive development, FBI leads, and has served as an instructor of ethics and criminal justice at Sierra College in Rockland. Whereas Sheriff Bonner began a highly respected member of the law enforcement in the state of California, served as president of the California State Sheriff's Association in 2008, and as an executive board member of the California State Sheriff's Association from 1998 to 2017. Whereas Sheriff Bonner provided excellent leadership in the office of the sheriff throughout Placer County, the community of the state of California, he continually demonstrated his dedication to protecting our citizens and to the sheriff's mission to maintain the quality of life enjoyed here and to ensure that our county is a safe place to live, work, and visit. Whereas, under his direction, Sheriff Ed Bonner, Placer County Sheriff's Office has consistently served the people of Placer County and built a reputation of a family-centered organization with the highest standards of honesty and integrity, with pride in themselves and ownership of their work, all the while treating each other with dignity, courtesy, and respect. Therefore, be it known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors unanimously. County of Placer County, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, at the regularly held meeting February 21, 2017, recognizing and thanking Sheriff Ed Bonner for his vast accomplishments and influence that will leave a lasting impression on our culture, families, and community. So before we do that, though, a little bit of a slide presentation, so if you. So, so do you remember when you and I were young and trying to save the world?
Uh, yeah.
And you're leaving here alone.
Counselor, do I have to answer?
So, and then there was a day when you had good taste to have a mustache, but shaved it off. And some other photographs from the archives.
Was that a pipe?
Yeah, it was a pipe.
It's a pipe.
And I just want to point out that I hope you've lost those socks.
Shorts. Made you faster.
Yeah, I think you're taller than the governor.
I know it must be time to go when Robert Wiegand can make me cry, for God's sake.
And then, on behalf of the board and the county, would you believe that I made this myself?
Uh, yeah.
You say so.
I'm a politician. But it's pretty. Thank you all.
Do you think there's a reception? So a lot of people know that and then we'll finish and then we'll join them. Should we just go? Well, you can go have a reception.
You look younger already.
Would you like to share some wisdom with us? Like stay out of the rain?
I just, I just talked for a while so we don't have to go out in the rain.
Hail.
We're, I've been blessed. I mean, I am the luckiest guy I know. To be able to work here as long as I have with, with the board, this board particularly has been, I could go just member by member and tell you how much I appreciate and value, my dear friend Robert, just, when you go, I got some pictures, too, just so you. And Kirk, my old cow bear. You were such a baby when you started. And then to come back, it's just marvelous. Geo Carden, counselor to the stars. You're amazing. Your friendship and counsel over the years has been a guiding light when I really needed somebody who would give me some sound advice and keep their mouth shut, you were the guy. And Madam Chair, my goodness, thank you for everything, just your continued friendship and support of the office, and for your husband giving my grandson a firefighter sticker dinner last night. But thankfully, we had some deputies that pulled out the junior deputy badge, and we put them over to fire people. David, thank you. I've told you before, I'll tell you in front of everybody, you are a pleasure to work with. I'm so appreciative of your approach, your willingness to sit down on a regular basis when we just kind of get caught up, and I do value that, and appreciate your support of the men and women in this organization behind us. My friend Jim, we kind of go way back, too, because I just sent Jim a photo of my grandfather when he had his station here in Auburn and C.C. Stanton, and then I asked who the third one was, thinking that maybe it was Jim's dad, but it was not. It was one of their distributors, I think your dad's. And really, this, for me, again, when you talk about just a lucky guy, I got to work with Carol Broder for all these years. I first met Carol in 1992 when I came down, I was shortly in charge of detectives. And she was working up there, and I go, "Man, that girl's good." She's incredible. And when I had the opportunity as a new sheriff, I went outside and brought in an under sheriff from San Jose Police Department, Steve DRC. And I told Steve, "Well, I can offer you less money, probably a little bit longer life, a little less stress," I said, "but I will give you the very best assistant in the organization." And I did, and that was Carol. And then when our dear friend Barbara Edison retired, I broke the promise and took her.[642.79][642.79](LAUGHTER). I don't think he ever got over it. But then, Steve was followed by Devin Bell, Sheriff, almost Sheriff Devin Bell. What an amazing young man he is, and I could not be prouder. It is, as you know, I mean, I know we've had conversations, it is bittersweet to walk away from something this cool, because this doesn't exist everywhere. But I walk away just with tremendous gratitude to you as a board and friends, and to the men and women that we, I've had just, what a privilege to work with. And to Devin Bell, because I kind of liked the baton thing. That was, that was very cool. And it is a baton passing, because we're just on the same team, we're on the same training schedule, and we will continue the tradition that we've built. Jeez, that's hard to look back. So I gotta look forward. I'm just, I'm blessed. I've had a great run, and I feel a little bit like the guy that just won the Super Bowl. I'm going to Disneyland, I'm gonna retire to Disneyland. But thank you all very much, and particularly to the men and women of the Placer County Sheriff's Office, but also, I think to the men and women of Placer County, everybody that works there and every division, no matter what they do, does it for the betterment of our community. Every branch of this great organization that you head up does amazing things every day for the citizens and the visitors that are here. And I just couldn't be prouder to have been a part of it for as long as I was. And the sheriff, almost sheriff, has guaranteed me that he will occasionally have to go golf with them and get to do some of the fun things. But from the bottom of my heart, these things mean so much to me, as your friendship and continued friendship. And I, my final ask is that he'll earn it, but I do want you to continue to support public safety, support Sheriff Bell, and the men and women that are behind me, those that aren't here because they're out in this rain, patrolling the streets and working the jails and handling coroner's cases and working the front counter and everything, everything that we do and how it all comes together. So, thank you so much from a very lucky guy. Thank you.
Thank you. You're not allowed to go away yet. Supervisor Holmes.
Yes, Sheriff Bonner, I don't know who arranged this rainstorm, but whenever you're watching a film and the scene shifts to a rainstorm, it means a symbol of change. And there's a new rain in Placer County Sheriff's Department. Sorry. And I want you to, now that you have Sheriff Devin Bell as your sheriff, I want you to remember, if you ever need anything, I am your representative on the board.[836.12][836.12](LAUGHTER).
Oh, you're on speed dial.[839.12][839.12](LAUGHTER).
Robert, did you have something?
No, I just finished my stand. You did well for...
Deli or bread?[848.12][848.12](LAUGHTER). Nice, nice from a fighting zebra, for God's sake.[853.12][853.12](LAUGHTER).
I want to see that video again of you running right over the top of him.[859.12][859.12](LAUGHTER).
I've actually been in the process of cleaning out my office, and I did come upon that.[865.12][865.12](LAUGHTER). He was whining because he thought there should be a foul unsportsmanlike conduct.
Since you brought up my relatively young age when I started, I was reminded, I'm the only member of this Board of Supervisors that has served with two sheriffs.
I...
I served with your predecessor.
That's true.
Yeah. You were better.[886.12][886.12](LAUGHTER).
Thanks.[888.12][888.12](LAUGHTER).
And as Robert was reading off that very impressive list of all your accomplishments, I thought, "I probably should have treated you with a little more respect than I did," you know, "because evidently to somebody out there, you accomplished something."
Well, thanks, because, you know, when I came up and we were all talking about Carol, how great she was, I was just sliced, you know, whatever. I'm very vulnerable right now, to be honest with you. I'm just saying.[917.12][917.12](LAUGHTER).
Well, let me just end with this. You, we are celebrating the fact that for 43-years, you have been enforcing the law. But for many more years than that, you've been living a law that I know is very important to you and is important to me. And Ed Bonner, you are trustworthy, you're loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, be it cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. Thank you for being a great sheriff and a great Eagle Scout.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Ed, I just want to say that, nodding my wildest dreams on my 13th birthday, February 11th, 1974, remember that day?
Yeah.
Did I realize how fortunate I was going to be so many years later in having you as, I'm gonna cry again, my sheriff.
Thank you.
I'm gonna stop, because I'll just cry otherwise, but it's been delightful.
I would do it too, so.
Godspeed.
Thank you.[977.82][977.82](APPLAUSE). Thank you so much.[979.82][979.82](APPLAUSE).
Thanks for that. And then, just two things very quickly. I understand in A, we have a reception, is that correct?
Right out in the hallway.
Oh, right out in the hallway. Too easy, way too easy, out in the lobby. And then the other thing is, we're going to need Sheriff Bonner and I believe soon-to-be Sheriff Bell up front here for a couple of quick photos, and then they will come join you at the reception. We unfortunately have to do our jobs and finish this board meeting, but if you would come up for some quick photos?
All right, we are back to our agenda items. We are going to move to our supplemental agenda item. This is item 6.1A, Treasury Tax Collector, Regarding Community Choice Aggregation and a Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement. Treasury Tax Collector Janine Windushausen presenting.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon.
Members of the board. Janine Windushausen, Placer County Treasury Tax Collector. I want to mention that I have here with me today the lead consultants on CCA, Dr. Dean Tibbs, Steve Nichols, and Tom Barrington. Right there. So, I'm gonna give you a very brief update on what is going on with CCA, and then you're asked to consider adopting a resolution approving an amendment to a JPA agreement and then to affirm your appointment to that JPA and also additionally appointing Supervisor Yuler to that JPA. So, last summer, the board authorized moving forward with implementing the CCA and allocated $1.4 million, just under $1.4 million for that effort. Since that time, we have executed agreements with industry consultants and other professionals to develop energy load profiles and energy supply portfolios, and we're about ready to commence development of rate structure proposals for the board to consider. We've developed a community outreach and information plan and contracted with a professional researcher to conduct focus groups in order to inform development of a broader survey for marketing purposes. We've entered into discussions and negotiations with two different energy suppliers. We're developing staffing and outsourcing plans and are in the process of hiring an HR consultant who will do job descriptions, salary studies, those types of things. And we are very engaged with other CCEs in happenings related to CCAs with the Public Utilities Commission and developing a number of policies for consideration by the board and keeping abreast of regulatory issues. We have also been meeting with representatives of the cities to engage them and invite them to participate, and so some of those discussions are ongoing. The city of Colfax is the other partner in the Sierra Valley Energy Authority, and that was originally created to be a conduit for the empower program. And that is the JPA agreement that you are being asked to approve an amendment to. The city of Colfax is scheduled to consider that tomorrow evening at their city council meeting. Just some key provisions that the amendment addresses, and that is that the amendment will then authorize the cities of Rockland, Lincoln, Auburn, and Colfax and the town of Loomis to be able to come on as voting members. It also restates in the purposes, the ability to operate a CCA program. It revises the existing board to be comprised of elected officials, including two members of your board and one city council member for each of the cities who join the JPA. It also states that the county will be reimbursed for all of its upfront costs in implementation until the financing arrangements have been made for the JPA and it has funding to repay the county. And then it also provides for orderly withdrawal of membership if any member decides to withdraw. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from any member of the board? I see none. Any questions from any member of the audience here or in Tahoe? Oh, wait, Kirk, your light came on.
No, not a question, just a comment. Have had the chance to meet extensively with Janine and her team on this at this point. I think this provides a very exciting opportunity for us here in Placer County. It will give us some, if properly utilized, some very effective tools for economic development in the county. And want to compliment Janine and her team on their outreach to the cities thus far. And we look forward to the opportunity with additional education of our city council folks in the cities not named Roseville, their future participation in this. Not that we have anything against Roseville, but just that Roseville simply can't participate by virtue of them being a municipal utility. So, good work so far, and I look forward to being a part of helping move it forward.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just follow up on that by saying that I think anytime we have an opportunity to control our own destiny to a greater extent, we should take it. And I think Placer County is so rich in natural and renewable resources that will support a CCA. Personally, I think any city or town would be foolish not to participate in this, but that's my personal opinion. So, I'm delighted this is moving forward, looking forward to serving on the committee with Kirk. And what's the pleasure of the board?
And I just wanted to point out that the resolution before your board is an updated version that was prepared and given to board members before the meeting.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to adopt a resolution and reaffirm the appointment of myself and appoint Supervisor Yuler. And we had a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to our last agendized item, or I should say, our last department item before we go to closed session. We are being asked to, let me find it, county executive item 7A, North Lake Tahoe Resort Association Fiscal Year 2016-17 Capital Project Recommendations, and it looks like Erin Casey is presenting. Welcome.
I am, hello. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Erin Casey, Senior Management Analyst with the County Executive Office. I'm here to present to your board visitor-serving capital projects and expenditures as recommended by the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association and as identified in the 2015 Tourism Master Plan. These projects have been reviewed and vetted by the Resort Association as per their contract with Placer County. These projects are recommended by the Resort Association's Capital Infrastructure and Transportation Committee and Board of Directors. I'd also like to add that on October 25th, 2016, your board also approved an amendment to the Resort Association contract with Placer County, which transfers administration of all approved infrastructure contracts from the Resort Association to the County Executive Office. Contracts for all approved non-county projects today will be brought to your board for review in the future and final approval, and they will include a scope of work and a budget as well. The recommended expenditure of $2,43,264 in Tahoe transient occupancy tax funds will provide funding for the following 14 projects. Truckee River Trail Restoration at $614,122. Kings Beach Roundabout Art at $75,000. Historic Schilling Ski Lodge Development Planning at $125,500. Mardis Valley North Star Trail Segments 1B-2, 3A, and 3F Design and Construction at $250,000. North Lake Tahoe Bike Trail Wayfinding Sinage $14,092. Bike and Transit User Website Upgrade at $30,000. Historic Donner Summit Gateway Visitor Kiosk $53,000. North Star Directional Wayfinding Sign $20,000. North Star Programmable Message Boards $51,500. Memorial Overland Immigrant Trail at $250,000. Kings Beach Roundabout Art at State Route 267, $100,000. North Star Tart Passenger Shuttle $60,000. Speedboat Beach Public Access Improvement Plan $275,000. And Squaw Valley Olympic Ski Museum Planning at $125,000. So, more detailed project descriptions are included in the staff report that you have before you, so in the interest of time, I'll conclude my remarks and answer questions. There are also representatives here from different projects, I believe, in the room today and also in Tahoe, who can help answer questions you may have on the projects before you as well.
Okay. Any questions from any member of this board? Seeing none, I will open this up to the public. Any member of the public, I'm gonna start here in Auburn. Any member of the public want to weigh in on any of the proposals or all of the proposals? Hearing nothing but the sound of rain, I will move to Tahoe City. Is there anyone in Tahoe City who would like to weigh in on the agenda item in front of us? I see one person leap up, but it's my district aide.
Hello, Supervisor Montgomery and board. I'm Lindsey Romack. I'm Supervisor Montgomery's Tahoe Field Rep, but I'm not speaking for myself today. I received an email from a Squaw Valley Municipal Advisory Council member, Elisa Adriani. She was unable to make the meeting this morning, now this afternoon, due to weather, so she asked if I could read her prepared statements. So here we go. Dear Honorable Board of Supervisors, I am writing to request that you deny the allocation of $125,000 in TOT funds to the Olympic Museum Committee. This group has previously been awarded over $200,000 in TOT funds as well as between $50,000 to $100,000 in county staff offers. They have wasted the original TOT grant designing buildings on what they viewed as potential museum sites. Many of these parcels were privately owned and not for sale. They were offered free land from the Squaw Valley Ski Holdings, but they do not want to be associated with Squaw, and so they turned down this offer. They don't want to work with the community, landowners, or residents. They only want a museum in the park. Their tunnel vision and unwillingness to work with the local community residents, land, and business owners portrays an entity that does not deserve funding from the taxes generated by the entities that they refuse to work with. After over $200,000, they have nothing to show for their efforts. They continue to insist that they can only build a museum in the park. Previous community polling show that the community does not want a museum in the park and that they prefer to save the little space left for recreation as the park was designed for. Additionally, there is no way that the museum and its proposed bus traffic will fit into the park. There is no more parking available. The land they requested should be saved for horseshoe... They were offered free land from the Squaw Valley Ski Holdings, but they do not want to be associated with Squaw, and so they turned down this offer. They don't want to work with the community, landowners, or residents. They only want a museum in the park. Their tunnel vision and unwillingness to work with the local community, residents, land, and business owners portrays an entity that does not deserve funding from the taxes generated by the entities that they refuse to work with. After over $200,000, they have nothing to show for their efforts. They continue to insist that they can only build a museum in the park. Previous community polling showed that the community does not want a museum in the park and that they prefer to save the little space left for recreation as the park was designed for. Additionally, there is no way that the museum and its proposed bus traffic will fit into the park. There is no more parking available. The land they requested should be saved for horseshoe pits, basketball hoops, volleyball, and much-needed additional shade. The museum intends to fund their operations through tour groups arriving at buses. There is nowhere for these buses to park. Additionally, you cannot have idling buses and their toxic emissions next to a TOT lot. The buses will not turn off their AC and motors in the heat of summer or cold of winter. The museum and its required parking and bus turnaround physically do not fit into the park. Please deny the TOT funds to the museum committee until they are willing to consider another site and until their board members have changed to a more fiscally conservative smart business planning board and not a group that wastes tax dollars with no results. Again, these are the words of Squaw Valley Municipal Advisory Council Member Alisa Adriani. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from up in Tahoe? Any other comments from down here in Auburn? Please come forward, identify yourself.
I had written in my notes, "Good morning," but I must change that to "Good afternoon." It's Madam Chair. And, excuse me, and Board of Supervisors, my name is Sandy Cho. I am actually the Executive Director of the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation, very fortunate to have joined this group. I joined the effort in September of 2016. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you on this behalf. I will, so obviously I've prepared statements and will try to address some of the concerns that came up in the Squaw Valley residents' comments. A number of, it's very difficult, of course, because a number of those comments that she's making are personal and not necessarily backed by facts, but I'll do my best to try to separate the two. So, the foundation is really excited to actually be here and to be able to ask for this grant. We considered this Phase III in our project request. The last two amounts of funds that we have received from the NLTRA grant were actually in 2008 and 2009. So, to give you some perspective, it's been a lot of time that has passed since we have been back to requesting these funds. But that has come about because of one really critical piece in July 2015, when this board did move forward to approve us trying to work through the necessary process and steps with the county to see if the desired site within Squaw Valley Park can work for this building. That's kind of opened the floodgates and allowed us to put down a number of action items, and I thought I would give you a quick update of what we've been working on, because it is quite exciting. So, for this project, the total amount is an estimated about $288,000, and the grant asks is for $125,000. The balance of $163,000, the museum foundation is currently fundraising through a number of efforts to make up. The reality is, we are a nonprofit public charity, so when we come and want to propose what could be a $15 million to $20 million museum project, it's just different than if we were a veil or a ski operation and whatnot. So, it does make us unique. What also makes us unique is the desired site is within a county-owned park. So, there's, you know, I truly believe that we are going to be partners in the long run, and this is going to be so exciting. It's a regional park. There are just users of that park. It's grown over the years. We fully recognize that, and it speaks to the success and the original intent of that park, and we truly believe this museum is going to add and enhance and improve upon the offerings. So, since July 2015, the things that we have been focused and working on, at the top of the list is working with the Forest Service. We have had over five years of back-and-forth communications, and they are mostly positive, and we are trying to wrap it up. The latest communications was from county planning staff to the Forest Service, supporting the museum being within the park and within the deed restrictions. So, we are in the, I am trying to work with the various parties so that we can wrap this up, because, believe me, we, of all people, would like to be able to resolve the Forest Service piece. It is critical to this site being successful. We did, we have, 2016 was an active fundraising year for us. We probably netted just under $70,000 when it was all said and done in individual giving. We're, it's our most critical priority right now, believe me, funding, so, which is why I'm here. And we truly believe that this museum is going to be a public and private endeavor. It is going to be a shared cause, and it will come with shared funding from a number of sources. Last summer, we were proactive and went ahead and engaged a consultant to start parking counts, and that was ahead of us actually officially submitting the EQ in late September, early October. And I'll do a couple of quick EQ-related updates as well, and then the hiring of me, of course. We, with the official submission of the EQ, we have been working with county planning staff. A tree study was conducted in November. We received feedback from county staff in terms of a couple of things that they recommended that we look at, and currently, we do have a consultant engaged to do both the parking as well as the traffic study, which we do believe are critical pieces. And what we are hoping to be able to do is to get the findings from these analyses so that we can truly have the community communications piece. We've been, believe me, we've been fielding all of the questions and concerns that have come to us. The reality is, when we first started this and were actively engaged in the site in Squaw Valley Park, a lot of things have changed. One of the biggest ones is pickleball courts have gone in. So, there is a part of what we're doing right now is to bring in, I see that I'm done.
Yeah, if you could wrap up.
I will wrap it up. So, what we're trying to do is to get the analysis and the studies so that we can actually have meaningful dialogue. There is, we do not, we have received feedback specifically from Ms. Montgomery. We believe the public process is so important, but we need to do it with more information at hand, so it's not that we're holding out. We just need to get a little bit further along. So, the last piece would be, we are engaging in an RFQ for architectural services, because that would allow us to conduct quite a bit of community process in terms of the design of the building, and we think that is important for the public process piece. So, to wrap up, we truly believe this museum is, it's a regional asset. It's going to support the master tourism plan, and it's something that we're really excited to be doing with the county. So, I do think today, the grant request for $125,000, it's critical seed money that as a startup we need today. It really is designed to only go towards infrastructure expenses, and a lot of that is outlined in detail. So, I appreciate your time and look forward to you supporting us moving this Olympic dream along. Thank you.
Any questions? Any member of the board?
Yeah, I had a question. Are you from, are you from the area or?
I'm actually, right now, in Park City, Utah, where we have our own Olympic legacy. It's where my background has been, and that's why this project was just so meaningful to me. And my husband teaches fifth grade, so we're letting him finish the school year, and we'll be out shortly.
Oh, good. Well, welcome, and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sandy, I had a couple of questions. You said the full amount that you're trying to raise for this segment of the process is $288,000?
So, we, when we outlined out the cost that it's going to take to kind of get to what I'm going to consider the goals, it is a completion of the EQ in a meaningful way where, at the end, we are seeing a mitigated neg-deck result, a successful public outreach campaign, and then ultimately being able to bring this project back to you.
And I'm sorry, what's the total on that?
It was $288,000.
Okay, and you're asking for $125,000 from the county toward that effort?
Yes, a less than half.
How much do you have on hand that you've raised privately?
Sure. So, coming in at the end of 2016 calendar year-wise, we were just under $70,000. We have had a couple of donations in Q1, and I am actively working on both grants and individual giving.
Yeah. And I ask because, as you know, because we had a conversation around this, when our board took the action to say, "Yeah, go ahead and take a look at the park location," I think Supervisor Yular specifically said, "You know, this is an opportunity for you guys to actually have a site that you can talk about to people"
Yes.
"and go out and do some private fundraising." And, you know, my concern is that while you've done some private fundraising, it sounds like it's not getting you to where you need to be.
Well, like I first started saying, we truly believe this is a public and private endeavor, and we need all the partners that we can get. And to define public funding more broadly would be of help to us, clearly. And we truly believe, when we look at a total of $288,000 and the fact that we are on our way to committing to more than half of that, the project itself follows the NLTRA Master Tourism Plan so closely. We truly are in this to bring in an additional cultural amenity to the region. So, when I look at it globally in that manner, I think that it is very fair for us to be matching over dollar for dollar to get to an end goal that will definitely benefit Placer County.
And I don't disagree. My concern is that you're at about a third of where you need to be right now of that $288,000. $212,000 has already come from the county.
Mm-hmm.
Again, you're right, you know, in sort of the midst of history at this point.
Yeah.
But, and I believe the intention of this board, I can't speak for all of them, was that this would be largely a privately funded opportunity that Placer County would partake in, potentially through essentially donation of the land. And so, I would...
How's this? If we look at it even more globally, at the end of the day, projections have been made, but it's been eight or nine years. This could easily be a $15 million to $20 million project. So, at the end of the day, percentage-wise, what I am trying to reach milestone today is such a small portion, and we truly are showing dollar for dollar that we are in this with you guys.
I'm going to have to respectfully disagree, because you're asking us for $125,000 on top of the $212,000 that the Olympic Foundation folks have already received. You've matched, it sounds like, about $90,000 against that. And our intent was to allow you to do robust private fundraising, and so far, I'm not seeing it. I'm seeing some fundraising, and I credit you for that.
Yes.
But, I'm, I understand that there are two conditions upon this.
Oh, wait, I'm going to sneak one last piece in. So, like I said, in 2008 and 2009, $212,000 were awarded to the foundation, and if it helps, we did, it was so successful. There was a half a million dollar, one private donation made in that effort. However, it is restricted funds to be used once we are actually in the process of building the museum itself. So, do know that the dollars have been very helpful, and to move this very large-scale project along, these additional grant requests will only add to the incremental success of the overall project.
Understood, but also recognize that we're talking about public tax dollars here and that we have a responsibility to guard and shepherd those appropriately. Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, I don't want to get in your business too much, but I'm assuming that you have a fundraising plan, you have milestones and goals and that kind of stuff, and that you're anticipating bringing in more money in phases, I suppose. Would that be accurate?
That is completely accurate. And can you imagine a project that has been spread over an eight-to-nine-year timeframe? So, a number of the fundraising practices obviously are still in place with the economy on the upswing that it is. It has been, I'm not going to use the term easier, because fundraising isn't easy, but our story has been able to resonate with more and more people. I will say, securing this site will be definitely the tipping point, and will open doors that we currently aren't quite able to tap into, so we're very excited about that, but we respect that there is a county process to get there.
So, getting back to the half a million dollars, that wasn't included in the $70,000 or $80,000 that you've already raised?
No.
Those are, those are...
That was, I don't, I don't know the exact date of it, but it took place in the 2009 to 2011 timeframe. The good news is, we do have some great financial planners, and it is making interest, and when we do get to spend it, it has grown robustly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin, could you address the two sort of contingencies on this request?
Sure. The two contingencies are, the first is, the award would be contingent upon the Forest Service making a determination that the use, the proposed use of the museum in the park is not in violation of the deed restriction that is placed on the park. So, that's the first. The second is the results, or would be the results of AUP engagement, which is essentially an audit light, that the Squaw Valley Museum Foundation is working with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association on to review how funds were spent in 2008 and 2009, specifically TOT funds. So, the Auditor Controller's Office is working with the County Executive Office as well as the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association to see that process through, and once the third-party firm has completed their review, we'll be taking a look at that and making sure that those expenditures are consistent with the grant applications that were approved by the Resort Association, as well as the budgets that were approved and then brought forward to your board.
And do you have a timeframe for when you think those two conditions will be resolved?
I don't have a timeframe for the Forest Service. I know that staff, county staff, have actively been engaging with the Forest Service in responding to their request for more information. I believe that that is currently with county council in terms of providing additional information to the Forest Service per request that came in in January. So, I'm not certain as to the timeframe or turnaround on that. The AUP engagement process, we, the Squaw Valley Museum Foundation has engaged a firm, and so we've been working with them, and I don't anticipate that taking longer than a couple of weeks to complete.
Agreed.
Jerry, do you have any idea on when your office will have something ready to send to the Forest Service?
Yeah, the Forest Service is looking for our opinion before they issue their opinion on the deed restrictions. So, we're working with Facility Services and getting the information necessary to form our opinion.
So, we don't have a timeframe, no expectation on either when we'll send something or when they'll respond?
Mark, next month or?
Yeah, it's not very long.
Before we send something to the Forest Service? Okay. And then we, obviously, we don't know the timeframe for the Forest Service for their response, because they're a different group than we are. I'm, you know, I don't object to allocating this. I am concerned that the fundraising to match these dollars is not as robust as I would hope. So, I would suggest, if my board is willing, that we add an additional condition to this, which is that the money be held until that full matching amount up to the $288,000 has been obtained, and that those two conditions have been met. What's the thought of my board members on that?
It does, how's this? It will create a delay in the public outreach process that I know you and I are both very keen on rolling out with the new pickleball courts, as well as just changes over time in the park use. I think it's really important that we are able to engage the architectural services firm, for instance, as well as other outside consultants and projects, so that we can continue to pump the information that we need to truly answer some of the community's questions.
So, I'm sorry, I'm unclear on how it would actually delay public outreach.
So, basically, by asking us, by adding a third contingency, where until we meet a certain threshold of fundraising dollars on the match, and not allowing us to receive the $125,000 in the same timeframe that all the other grant requesters would be receiving funds, those, I would basically have to prioritize and cherry-pick and delay certain engagements, which would then allow us to not have, would allow us to not have the information that we would like to be able to have sooner, so that we can be timed with the county-wide parks planning, as well as, I would love to be able to start public sessions in the late spring.
But would you not be able to do that with the $80,000 in private funding that you've raised?
So, the way this budget's been outlined out, certain very specific infrastructure-oriented expenses currently are being allocated for the $125,000 that we are requesting for.
It's an interesting model.
It was, how's this? We wanted to truly respect that this is an infrastructure grant. So, my expense paying me is not in that, obviously, and is something, you know, nothing like standing up here saying, "I'm fundraising for myself," but truly, there are a number of administrative costs that we're trying to keep on the Squaw Valley Ski Museum side of the budget line items, because we do respect that this grant is, you know, it's important. It is money coming from the TOT, and every dollar should be going towards expenses that are truly designed for that grant.
I don't disagree. I think where our disagreement is, is in the public outreach and how that's funded, and it sounds as if that you already have dollars that could go to that public outreach. I will leave it at that. Jim?
All right. I just want to say I'm comfortable with the item as presented, so I will be supporting the item.
I'd just move approval of the Resort Association's 2016-17 Capital Project Recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm voting aye, but stating and making clear my concerns about the use of the funds on the $125,000 grant.
Understood, and our office will be monitoring that. Supervisor Montgomery, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move to closed session. Jerry, did you want to take us away?
I don't think we have enough time to get down to the...
The board will now adjourn to closed session for a conference of legal...
The board will now adjourn to closed session for a conference with legal counsel to discuss one item of existing litigation. The AT versus Dry Creek Joint Elementary School District is being pulled and won't be discussed, and just be discussing the worker's compensation claim. And also, the board will be meeting for a conference with real property negotiators for an identified piece of property. Okay. The board has returned from closed session, where they had a conference with legal counsel to discuss one worker's compensation case and gave direction to counsel on that case. Board also had a conference with its real property negotiators and gave direction to its real property negotiators on a piece of property along Bear River. That concludes the closed session report.